Good evening, everyone, and welcome. I'd like to call this July 27th meeting of the Bloomington City Council to order. We'll start our meetings as we all always do. If you would, please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all. Ms. Christensen, could you please call the roll for this evening's meeting?
Thank you. Councilmember Bogga.
Here.
Mayor Bussey.
Here.
Councilmember Carter. Councilmember Carter. I see her. Councilmember Carter, can you hear me? We'll come back to her.
Sorry, I was having some mania or something. I'm here.
Thank you. Councilmember Coulter.
Here.
Councilmember Lohman. Councilmember Lohman, can you hear me? Councilmember Martin.
I'm here.
Councilmember Nelson.
Let the record show, I think we have six of seven who officially answered here. I think Councilmember Lohman might be having some technical issues. If we could, then we'll move on to item four, which is the approval of our agenda. You will have the agenda there in front of you. It includes in our introductory items, a timed item, 8.7 up to our introductory items, which is the question on the ranked choice voting ballot question. So unless there are changes, I'd entertain a motion to approve our agenda for this evening.
So moved, Councilmember Lohman.
Second, Martin.
We have a motion by Councilmember Lohman, who is now present, and second by Councilmember Martin, to approve this evening's agenda. No further discussion. Ms. Christensen, please call the roll.
Thank you.
Hi.
Mayor Bussey.
Hi.
Carter.
Hi, and I'm sorry, I'm having some really terrible sound issues, and so I'm gonna try to fix them, but it's all, all the noises, all jumbled up.
Thank you. Councilmember Coulter.
Hi.
Lohman.
Hi.
Martin.
Hi.
Nelson.
Motion to pass the agenda carries at 7-0. If everybody just hold on one second, we're having some sound issues here. I just want to make sure everything is quiet. Hold on one second here. Ben, in the back, could you make sure that all of the microphones at the dais are turned off? And the other microphones here in the council chambers? Because I'm getting a lot of echoey here in the council chambers as well. We will keep working on those. And with that, we can move on to item 5.1, which is our COVID-19 Organization and Public Health update. Since mid-March, we've been having updates at each of our meetings on the latest for COVID-19 here in the city of Bloomington. So I'd like to introduce now Dr. Nick Kelly, who will give us our latest update on COVID-19. Dr. Kelly, are you there?
Good evening, Mayor. Councilmembers. As of this afternoon, there have been 1,049 confirmed cases of COVID-19 in Bloomington. We've lost 43 of our neighbors to this disease, and 94 have been hospitalized. With over 1,000 confirmed cases in Bloomington, I wanted to dive a bit more into the data tonight. We look at data, we're comparing it to national, state trends, and our population. The mean age of case right now is 40.2. When we look at race and ethnicity for cases, where the information is known, 35.4% of cases report Hispanic ethnicity, and 23.2% report their race is black. Over 50% of our cases are from the Black, Indigenous, and people of color community, while the American Community Survey estimates that 28% of Bloomington's population identifies as a member of the BIPOC community. We've seen a significant shift in who is getting sick based on age groups. Almost half of our cases occurred during March, April, or May of this month, this year, with 28% of those cases occurring in adults over the age of 60, and 28% of those cases occurring in individuals 29 and younger. In June and July, we saw 10% of our cases occurring in adults over the age of 60, and 48% of cases occurring in individuals 29 and younger. In July, so far, we've had 281 cases with a mean age of 33. The largest group with case, age group with cases in July is the 19 and underage group, followed by the 20 to 29 age group. Together, they make up half of our cases in July. For hospitalization, our mean age of case is 57.6. When we look at race and ethnicity, 47% of our cases are in the BIPOC community. We see a disproportionate impact in our Black community, with hospitalization with 31% of hospitalized cases, while representing about 9% of the city's population. For deaths, our mean age is 78.9. We see 72% of the deaths occurring in long-term care, assisted living, or group home living settings. We do not see a disproportionate impact by race or ethnicity at this time, and our data regarding death are in line with state, national expectations, and when we compare it to the county-level data, too. It's reflective of how our community is demographically structured. We must remain focused on learning to live with COVID-19. This does not mean that COVID-19 is over. It is far from over. We're seeing some indicators of concern at the state level. Our data in Bloomington is holding steady. We're not getting worse, we're not getting better. Since mid-June, we've been averaging between 10 to 13 cases per day consistently, with community-acquired infections, meaning they got it somewhere in the community, are their most common exposure source. This virus will continue to find a way to infect us until we find a way to beat it. Our ability to live with COVID depends on our ability to manage the risks associated at a population level. We need to be comfortable being six feet from those outside of our immediate family. This is our most important thing we can be doing. We need to focus on limiting our time in crowded places, confined and enclosed spaces, and those where we're having that prolonged close contact. Everyone should be using a face covering as source control in indoor environments, open to the public as directed by Executive Order 2081, and staying home when feeling unwell. This is part of the multi-layered level of strategies that public health has out there to help us manage the risks of COVID-19. We must strive to be doing better with these strategies, and continue to focus on dropping our average cases per day. COVID-19 is changing many things, but it doesn't have to change how our community responds. Our physical distance doesn't have to mean social isolation. We're gonna get through this together. Our community is full of kind and helpful neighbors.
Thank you, Dr. Kelly. Counsel, any questions of Dr. Kelly? I do have a question. We might address this a bit later, Dr. Kelly, but I did want to ask you now. Obviously, the statewide mask mandate went into effect over the weekend. Do we have any reports of complaints or concerns from folks in Bloomington about people not following the mask mandate? Have you heard anything about that?
I'm not aware of any of those complaints that we've received in public health. I do know that there were several complaints filed with the state across the state of Minnesota over the weekend. I do know that environmental health may be more likely to get those complaints than public health because of the businesses they serve.
Thank you. Counsel, any additional questions of Dr. Kelly at this time? Councilmember Nelson, use your hand up.
Thank you, Mayor. And actually, I just had a quick question for you.
Excuse me, Councilmember Nelson, we're having a hard time hearing you, and I'm not sure if that's just in the chambers here or across the entire broadcast. Are others having a hard time hearing, Doctor? Or, excuse me, Councilmember Nelson?
I'll try to speak up. Can you hear me better now?
Just, no, it's not.
I'll just restart. Not urgent.
All right, we'll have to. We're having some sound issues this evening, and I apologize for that. And Councilmember Nelson is gonna give a reboot and see if that works. Councilmember Lohman, a question?
Mayor, I just want to bring up the issue of the sound. It started off as tingly, now it's gotten a little bit better. How is, how do I sound?
You, you sound, we can hear you. You sound good. You don't sound any worse than you typically do, or any better than you typically do. So you sound good.
I'll take that.
Okay. Any other questions or concerns on sound that we could address here quickly, or? We'll see if Councilmember Nelson pops back in here. If he's got a better connection this time, we'll give him just a moment here.
Can you hear me better now?
Just slightly. But why don't you go ahead with your, if your question, if you could?
Well, my question was related to what you asked about the face masks, and I know we have a public hearing later tonight, and I just thought it might be nice to, if that is not something we're gonna act on, let people know that are here for that item early in the meeting. I don't know if we will take action or not, but with what the governor did, I don't know that it's pertinent.
So my thought, my plan on the hearing that's later, and that is item, item 8.6, which is a public hearing regarding requiring face coverings in Minnesota. Obviously, with the governor's declaration over the weekend, it, it makes Bloomington's work here somewhat redundant. My plan was, I was going to open the public hearing, we were gonna take public comment on this, and let people express their opinions one way or another, understanding, of course, we are under statewide mandate and following the governor's orders on this. My plan then was to table this indefinitely. So we'll, we'll open the public hearing, we'll take public comment and input. We would then close the public hearing, then my, my thought was to table this indefinitely on, on the, on the chance that if we would need to readdress this in the future, for some reason, we've held a public hearing on it. We've, it affects how we would have to notice it and so on. So that's my thought for that coming up. Yes, obviously, it's with, with a statewide mandate in effect, it's a, it's a bit of a moot point to do a, to talk about a local mandate, but my plan was still to have the public hearing on this and to allow public comment. Does that make sense, Councilmember Nelson? Okay. Any additional questions? If we could, can we just do a quick sound check for everybody? Just to make sure where everybody has got their microphones on and working? If we could just go one at a time? If Ms. Christensen, if you could have everybody just, just, everybody say your name, just to make sure that we've got sound working for everybody? If you could do that, and as Ms. Christensen calls you?
Councilmember Bogga.
I'm here.
Mayor Bussey, you sounded good.
I, thank you, I'm here as well.
Councilmember Carter.
I'm here, and on my end, things sound a lot better, so.
Councilmember Coulter.
I'm here, and I can hear everyone just fine.
Councilmember Lohman.
Hi, things are sounding a lot better now. I can even hear Sean.
Councilmember Martin.
I'm here, and I'm good.
And Councilmember Nelson.
And we didn't hear you at all there, Councilmember Nelson. I think you were muted.
That was operator error. For myself, at least, so.
So we're having trouble hearing Councilmember Nelson here in the chambers. Can everybody else hear him okay, or is he still low on? Okay, yeah, we're having trouble here in the chambers. Maybe we need to turn up a little bit here in the chambers and see. Okay. All right, if everybody could just keep that in mind moving forward here. If, if there are ongoing issues, if you just raise your hand or bring them up, and we'll see what we can do to adjust them. Next on the agenda, it's a timed item, item 8.7, which is ranked choice voting ballot questions. And this is a timed item, and I think we're within our time here to, to be able to take this up. As you all know, we've, we've been at this for a while. We had a, a public hearing back on May 18th, and the city council unanimously approved the adoption of an ordinance calling for a ballot question to amend the city charter and adopt ranked choice voting for municipal elections in Bloomington. It then went to the Charter Commission, I think on June 11th, and with the 10 members at the Charter Commission, it tied in a 5-5 vote, and so it was not accepted or rejected. And the Charter Commission then met again on, I'm getting my dates here, June 29th, and, excuse me, July 9th, the Charter Commission met, and the Charter Commission actually voted to not accept the language put forth by the city council in terms of a ranked choice voting ballot question. The Charter Commission is a, is an advisory commission. Their role is advisory to the city council, and at our last study session, the council made the decision to continue to move forward despite the Charter Commission's recommendation. And the city council not only decided to move forward, but then also agreed on a ballot question that will be deciding on tonight whether or not to approve a ballot question to go on the November ballot. That question reads, "Shall the Bloomington City Charter be amended to elect the mayor and the city council members by the ranked choice voting method?" And the proposed title for the ballot question would be "Electing Mayor and City Council by Rank Choice Voting." So I think we've had, we've had public hearings on this, and taken public comment, and goodness knows we've had plenty of input from residents on this. I think I said incorrectly in my council minute last week that this was a public hearing. In fact, it's not. We've had the public hearings required for this, and, and a number of different public hearings, both at the Charter Commission and here at the city council. And as I said, we've, we've received a number of communications and a great deal of feedback from residents on this. So, Counsel, I would look for discussion on this, and/or eventually a motion to move forward or to not move forward with placing ranked choice voting as a ballot question here on the November ballot. Councilmember Coulter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I just have one question, and I, I know I've been hearing from a lot of folks in the community, and I'm sure others have as well. And I'm just wondering if staff could give us a more, a, as, you know, a sort of an exact sort of accounting of any anticipated costs? If, if ranked choice voting were to be approved, if, if we were to move to that system, what that would look like in terms of cost to this city and changes, and so on?
Ms. Wilson, can you help us with this one?
I can certainly give you staff's best estimate, Mr. Mayor. Just a moment, I'm pulling up my spreadsheet in hopes to be as exact as possible. So there is both a significant cost savings to moving to ranked choice voting, which we expect will be diminished a bit in the first year by some one-time costs. The city currently conducts a primary in August of the odd-numbered years, and that primary is specifically for the purpose of narrowing the field of candidates for the office of mayor and city council to two for each seat. If the city were to use the ranked choice voting method, that primary would no longer be needed. We estimate that the primary costs us just over $100,000. $101,500 is our estimate of the cost of running that primary in odd-numbered years. So we would have that savings of just over $100,000 if ranked choice voting were adopted, because we would no longer conduct that primary. In the first year, we believe that we would have a few increased costs. However, they are small, and they would no way kind of eat up all of the savings. They would just slightly diminish the savings. So we expect first-year costs for voter information and education to do everything we can to make sure voters understand how to cast a ballot in the ranked choice voting method. We estimate that at $15,000. We will need to do some programming of our existing ballot counters, which has about a $1,500 cost, and then roughly $10,000 for additional one-time training for our election judges. So about $26,500 in estimated one-time costs. So our net anticipated savings in 2021 would be $75,000, and then we expect we would see the full savings of about $101,000 in future odd-numbered years. This is in every other year savings, because it alters our election process only in the municipal election years.
Thank you. Councilmember Coulter, and does that answer your questions? Does it clarify things? So roughly $100,000 savings. Upfront cost would be about $15,000 in education, $1,500 to reprogram some voting machines, and another $10,000 in training. So a net gain in the first year of about $75,000, and then in coming odd-numbered years would be about $100,000 saving. Does that answer the questions you were being asked or looking for?
Yes, I think that answers my question about as fully as it can be answered right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Martin and Councilmember Bogga, I didn't see whose hand went up first. I will defer to which one of you, I don't know if you saw who had their hand up first, but I will defer to...
Councilmember Bogga, you can feel free to, to take it first.
Councilmember Bogga, please.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. This is sort of a technical question. I think a number of us that received emails would suspect that this would be a public hearing. I, I, as, just before the start of this meeting, got another one, and that listed a council member saying yes they would, and a staff member saying no they wouldn't. And because it's in the hearings, resolutions, and ordinances, I weighed in and agreed that it would have a public hearing component. Could somebody further explain if, if the public hearing is optional or not mandatory in this instance? Why there isn't one, so that I can correct, if I'm in air, that air to some city residents?
Thank you, Member Counsel. As I said earlier, I think I said incorrectly during my council minute that this was a public hearing, and I may have given people the wrong impression there, or I flat-out said it incorrectly, and it is not. I don't know if the, if it's required, or this is a discretionary public hearing, since we have had at least two public hearings on this in the past. And so I would turn either to Ms. Wilson, or I believe Mr. Verbrugge is now on the phone with us. Mr. Verbrugge was over at the Chamber of Com, or excuse me, the Rotary Event on, on racial equity, so I don't know if he'll make it, but I know he's on the phone with us. So I'll turn it over to either one of you two to help explain that one for us.
Mr. Mayor, I can help out here. There is no requirement for a public hearing at this stage of the process. The city council has already conducted a public hearing on this matter, as has the Charter Commission, and no public hearing has been noticed for tonight using our formal notification methods. It is up to the mayor's discretion as to whether or not you wish to take comment on an item on the agenda that is not a public hearing, but there is no requirement. All requirements for public hearings have been satisfied by previous actions.
Thank you. Councilmember Bogga?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Then, as a follow-up, and this is not for tonight, but for future items, to avoid that confusion, we should have some type of amputation on the agenda so that we don't have the presumption that because it falls in Section 8, which are typically the public hearings, that this item will not have a public hearing. So a comment going forward. Thank you.
And I would agree with you, Councilmember Bogga. Because the heading is "Hearings, Resolutions, and Ordinances", I think anything underneath that, we just assume, yeah, that'll be, it would be a hearing, and, but that wouldn't be the case here. I, I understand your concerns and, and agree with you there. Councilmember Martin?
Thank you very much, Mayor. Just real quick, I, I've heard from some folks that are just kind of interested to learn more about ranked choice voting. Generally, I'm sure there'll be proponents and opponents out there in social media over the next few months, but to the voter education materials that were mentioned earlier by staff, what can residents, who are just curious to learn more, expect to come from the city? Kind of what channels that may be through, and generally what information will we be providing?
Ms. Wilson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Councilmember Martin. The city can and will provide information for voters. However, we are not allowed, and it wouldn't be appropriate for us to take a position for or against the ballot question, or to urge people to vote one way or another on a ballot question. There is a very brief page on ranked choice voting already up on the city's website that was put up prior to the council's public hearing on this subject on May 18th. Should the city council decide this evening to advance this matter to the November ballot, that FAQ page on the city website will be updated within the next day or two to provide additional information for voters. We will also be using the monthly briefing to get information out, as well as our social media accounts, to draw people's attention to the city's website, where they can find more information. As you've indicated, I also expect there will be opponents and proponents of this proposal that are trying to reach voters in the community. So, and just as a reminder, we do have two questions that have already been moved forward to the ballot related to the organized collection system for garbage and recycling, and we take a similar posture to that, which is providing information, but not advocating for or against the adoption of the ballot questions.
Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel, any additional questions on this? Councilmember Coulter?
Well, Mayor, I don't have any other questions, but I did have some comments I wanted to make. So if other folks have questions, I'll let them go first.
Let, let's make sure there are no other questions? Seeing no one else come forward? Yeah, oh, I'm sorry, Councilmember Carter, a question, or did you want to weigh in with a comment as well?
Thank you, Mayor. I do have a comment to make, but first I do have a question. And I think there was some confusion also in some of the emails that we got today from residents, thinking that this was gonna be a question on the primary ballot, and I just want to confirm that this is going to be a question on the November ballot only.
That is correct, Councilmember Carter.
Okay, thank you.
I think that's, that's, that's important, and the clarification, again, this will be on the November ballot, and it's also important that the decision we're making tonight is not thumbs up or thumbs down on ranked choice voting. The decision we're making is whether or not to put it on the ballot to give the citizens of Bloomington the choice whether or not to adopt ranked choice voting. So I think there's some confusion there as well, and, and maybe some misinformation going out about exactly what we're talking about tonight. So, Councilmember Coulter, please.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you for that comment as well. I think that's, that's a really important clarification. You know, it may surprise some folks to learn that I am not in love with ranked choice voting. In fact, the very first conversation I had as a council member with a resident about it actually got pretty intense. I don't believe it's the end-all and be-all, and I will admit that some of the claims I've heard about it can't be backed up. I will freely admit that it's not a perfect system, but there will, there is not, and will never be, a perfect system. And we need to be clear that the system that we have right now is far from perfect. When I was elected, the primary to determine who would be on the November ballot had about 7% turnout, fewer than 3,700 votes. Now, last year's primary was a little bit better, but it was still... Now, last year's primary was a little bit better, uh, but it was still under twelve percent. Are we really saying we shouldn't try to do better than a primary where barely one in 10 voters even bothered to fill in a couple bubbles on the ballot? And, you know, I think it's perfectly fair to raise the question of if this is the right time. And I guess I would just say that if folks can elect a president, members of Congress and state legislators in a pandemic, they can make a decision on one ballot question. And there may well be folks who either aren't able to learn enough or just can't decide. And they have an option too, simply not voting on the question. Not voting it at all does not affect the results in any way. Now, I want to be clear that I'm not advocating that people don't vote. But the fact is that the only way this question will pass is if more than fifty one percent of the people who take the time to vote on it vote yes. This conversation has not been rushed. It has not been sprung on anyone at the last minute. It's been mentioned before that ranked choice voting was discussed quite frequently during the campaign last year, in addition to the multiple public meetings on it this year. Minneapolis has used it for more than a decade and St. Paul nearly as long. I'd also point out, as was just mentioned, we have a primary in two weeks. There are congressional, legislative and county races that won't have their November ballot sent, set until then, including some right here in Bloomington. As of tomorrow, we have ninety eight days, more than three months until Election Day. That is plenty of time for folks to make up their minds on a yes or no question. And to be frank, to begrudge our fellow Bloomington residents for exercising their right to engage and organize around an issue that they care about and want to work on, simply because opponents didn't do the same sends precisely the wrong message. We should be encouraging folks to be engaging with their community and working, working to make it better. We should be encouraging the debate, not preempting it. I can't say for certain what effect ranked choice voting will have on our elections and on our campaigns. I do think that it has the potential to make things better and at the very least, I don't have any reason to think it'll make things worse. Given that, I feel completely comfortable putting this decision in the hands of Bloomington voters. They may approve it, they may not. That's the nature of democracy and I'm perfectly prepared to accept it either way. It just, it sometimes it sounds to me that at the end of the day, some folks seem to be arguing that we can't trust voters to make up their own minds, that Bloomington voters will be so overwhelmed or confused or hornswoggled that we can't even put the question before them. And I just don't buy that. Let's let Bloomington vote.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Beloga?
Uh, thank you, although I believe Councilmember Carter was ahead of me before comments.
Oh, I believe you, I did not see her hand up, so I was just going by hands up in front of me. So Councilmember Carter?
Thank you, Mayor. I had put my hand down, but I'm, I'm happy to make comments really quickly. I'm not gonna talk at length because we've had multiple conversations on ranked choice voting and putting it on the ballot over several council meetings and, and as you mentioned, have public hearings. And as Councilmember Coulter just mentioned, um, you know, it's been a conversation happening for over a year in Bloomington. It was a question that was asked at every single, um, every single candidate forum that we were part of. And so, you know, I guess I don't think it will be any surprise to anybody that I am definitely supportive and I think we should move forward with putting the question on the ballot and ultimately letting the voters decide. And I do think that 2020 is the year precisely because it is a presidential election and we will have extremely high voter turnout. I think the more people that we have weighing in on this question, the better and the more fair it makes the outcome. And so, um, so I will, I will keep my comments short and, and say that I support moving forward. And, um, yeah, I will end there.
Thank you. Now, Councilmember Beloga?
Uh, thank you, Ms. Mayor. I am unable to support adding ranked choice voting to the ballot at this time, not on the basis of either supporting or opposing this issue, but strictly as a matter of my principle. At the March 16th council meeting, the city manager and the mayor both stated that due to the COVID-19 pandemic, we would only deal in subsequent meetings with matters required by statute or necessary for the operation of the city. Following this, uh, statement, several weeks later, ranked choice voting was brought up. Since the city council made this commitment and is now breaking this promise to the constituents of the city, I'm unable to support it. I do not, uh, argue the points made by other council members. I am merely stating my, uh, principle of opposition to it. And again, it's not either that I am opposed to or would support ranked choice voting. It's just my principles when we say we're not going to do something and then later do it. I don't believe that the unjustifies the means, so I cannot support it. So thank you for the time.
Thank you, Councilmember Beloga? Additional comments or questions? Councilmember Lohman?
Uh, thank you, just a second here. All right, well, uh, give it off top of my head here. What I'll say is, uh, this, this is, uh, certainly, uh, an important issue, uh, that we face before the city. First of all, what I'd like to say is, uh, process and procedure, uh, is incredibly, uh, important. As this thing started, um, you know, certainly we worked hard to, you know, as other council members have said, this is, this is not a brand new issue, uh, that's become before, uh, this council. Uh, when we were running in the last election, it was there even before that election, actually. Conversation was held regarding this topic. We've had a series of procedural and process, um, blunders along the way. One of the things I like about what we did tonight is we, uh, Mayor, you, we moved this towards the front of the meeting so that people could see that what we were talking about. You know, a couple of meetings back when this first came up, it was kind of late at night. And then we had the debacle with our, our Charter Commission, uh, meeting. Then it then actually failed in the Charter Commission meeting. And there were certainly some confusion about this, you know, process and how you get things across, you know, has a part of, part of integrity and how, how we're seen as an institution. You know, unfortunately, I even thought today we had a public hearing. And so if there's some folks that are, are there and you think that they believe that they'll be able to address the council and be able to address, uh, uh, you know, address, uh, their fellow, uh, council members to make one last pitch, they're not able to do that. And that, that creates, um, a situation where, where folks genuinely, uh, are concerned, not about really the choice, they start looking at our, our process. And that, that's one of the things that I, I'm, you know, fairly concerned about. And one of the things that I'm concerned about as we move towards, uh, the November election is, you know, will that taint, uh, the, the process? Will we get a, get a fair vote or will we have some folks who will simply say to themselves, I, I can't support this because of the process? And I just think that, uh, if there's anything that we can do, kind of moving forward, that we can learn from these circumstances and these situations is just that we are, are careful, that we, uh, make sure that the integrity of the process is, is followed. So that would be my, my first point. We had a commission, uh, meeting, uh, with the Charter Commission and they voted, uh, not everyone was there the first time and certainly when more folks showed up, they, they voted no. Their recommendation to us was no because they, they felt that, uh, and certainly, I certainly believe that those folks that are in that, that, uh, that do not support this, uh, may have a legitimate claim that, uh, in August, when this question is finally put, uh, put out there, uh, there's very little time to organize against it. And then also in the middle of a pandemic, uh, you can't go door to door, which is one of the cheapest ways in which, uh, for you to do that. On the other hand, folks argue that, you know, you've known this was coming all along. But one could make the argument that you didn't know the specific question that you were disagreeing with. Those two things, uh, as, as a, as a person who wants to have everyone's opinions and points of views, be able to have the free rate, certainly are things that weigh on me. On the other hand of the, of the, uh, of the question is, uh, the timing. If we do not vote, uh, on this, uh, this November, realistically, the next most plausible time to make sure that we're going to have another turnout for this will probably be in four years. There's been a tremendous amount of work that's been put into this, uh, by the group that's advocating for this. And so if we were to delay that vote, uh, for four years to take that vote, um, that would also be a travesty. So I, I, I look at both these things and I think that what it all spins down to me is that, you know, we have got to, in my opinion, as a council member, we need to do a better job of how we handle and how we move these things through their controversial to be sure that we ensure that those folks that are in the majority, uh, or those folks that they may have the prevailing, uh, position and those folks that have the, uh, the non prevailing position feel that their ability to be able to, to discourse amongst our council is upheld. It's tricky for me because I, I do believe that, uh, if we were to pass this and the, the residents of Bloomington were to pass this, that this would be beneficial to me. And so that's problematic for me, um, in, in terms of trying to, trying to, trying to support this, uh, understanding that. But knowing that this is going forward and having, uh, the residents of Bloomington to be able to decide what they want to do, I think that you need to, to keep all of those things in mind as you're looking at this decision around ranked choice voting. Certainly I've got my opinions about, uh, about this process and how we followed it and, and what's happened and taken place here. And I think you've got to decide what you think is right and what you believe is right. If this is the right process by which that you want to, uh, support things coming through our council or, uh, or something else. Certainly there's merit here, uh, with looking at ranked choice voting. Certainly there are some concerns about, uh, those folks who, um, uh, when the voting comes up in terms of realities and those types of things. But certainly I'm, I'm looking forward to having those discussions if we were to pass this and the voters of Bloomington were to put this, um, through, uh, the pass. So with that being said, um, I'm looking forward, uh, to taking the vote, um, and, uh, and moving on to the next stage of this process.
Thank you. Councilmember Martin?
Uh, thank you very much. I'll try not to repeat too much of what's been said here, but, uh, for me personally, and I mentioned this in our last study session, while I appreciate, um, how the Charter Commission dug in on this and, and expressed some concerns, which I'm assuming led to another declination to, to support it. I just simply don't agree with a lot of the concerns that were moved forward. And, and to the timing point, I want as many Bloomington resident eyeballs on this as possible and leveraging what's going to be, I'm sure, a supercharged presidential election coming up is one way to, to make sure that happens. I, I also, uh, I, I have heard concerns from folks that said, well, the opponents on this matter, uh, haven't been nearly as organized. The folks that are in favor of this have been out for years now. And I guess I, I don't want, when the city is not supposed to be advocating for one side or the other to this, I don't want to insert ourselves as the avatar of deciding what organizational group is better prepared than another. My calculation at this point is, has there been an overwhelming call from residents from my constituents to be able to weigh in on this? And yes, there has been. One side or the other, uh, of where that goes is not my purview. It's providing Bloomington residents the opportunity to make a choice that they've overwhelmingly communicated to me that they would like to make. And I guess if you want everybody's opinion on ranked choice voting, if you want perspective, if you want as many voices as possible, put it on the ballot and let up to eighty five thousand Bloomington residents all give you the opinion on the item. So, uh, again, not, not weighing in on one side or the other, but, uh, my email inbox is full of communications from folks asking for a chance to weigh in and, uh, I would like to give it to them. Thank you.
Thank you. Council, any others? Councilmember Lohman?
Mayor, if there isn't any, uh, any other, uh, interest in this, I'd like to, uh, turn it over and let, uh, Councilmember Carter have the opportunity of moving this particular motion.
I, I, I appreciate that, Councilmember Lohman. I think, uh, I know that our, our city attorney would like to, to clarify at least one of the points made. And, uh, um, if, uh, if we get to that, when we get to, uh, Councilmember Carter, if she would like to make the motion, we certainly could. Ms. Manderscheid, did you want to, uh, make a correction or a clarification to one of the points made earlier?
Thank you, Mayor Members. I just wanted to, uh, make sure that everyone on the council was aware that when we met and at the study session, um, me, I talked about the three different options that I put forward. And you all had indicated that you liked the one that said, shall the Bloomington city charter be amended to elect the mayor and city council members by the ranked choice voting method? And I just wanted to let you all know that when I looked back at the questions that were finally, um, decided upon for the other two ballot questions, we used the word should instead of shall. And so I just wanted to alert you that I included the word should here instead of shall. It's for consistency and I didn't want anyone, should this ultimately end up on the ballot, to wonder if there was something unique about this, um, question because it used the word shall instead of should. So just a very minor distinction, but I just wanted to draw it to your attention, um, so that I, um, kept you in the loop on that.
Thank you. Just make sure everything is consistent. I appreciate that. That's good. Uh, I just wanted to weigh in. So we've, um, uh, regarding what was said back in, in March, uh, I remember the discussion. I honestly don't remember who said what. I may have said that we weren't moving forward and somebody may correct me if I say that I didn't. I, I honestly don't know. I don't think I did because, uh, but for whatever reason. So we said that in mid-March. And then in mid-May, after a public hearing, we voted seven oh to move this forward. So it was, it was, uh, not necessarily a staff driven thing. It was, it was a council driven thing. We were, we were pushing this forward as a council with a seven oh vote. And there was also a discussion at the council level, uh, as to whether or not during this pandemic, during the times of, uh, of folks working at home and the fact that our, our staff was being stretched in, in different ways, whether or not we wanted to move forward with a variety of different things. And if I recall the discussion, there was a lot of enthusiasm to continue moving forward with some fairly sizable items. And, uh, at no time did I hear a discussion saying, no, no, let's put the brakes on what we're doing here as a council. Uh, I mean, just within the past few weeks, we, we put a year long moratorium on, on storage facilities, which was a huge lift for staff. There was a lot of work for staff. We chose to move forward on that because we thought it was an important thing to move forward on. Our Lyndale Avenue project that we're working on, we, we instructed staff to continue to move forward on it. That's, that is a, that's a large project and it's away from the nuts and bolts of what we're doing, but it's, it's an important project. And it's something that we think is a worthwhile time for, for staff to be spending time on it, for the council to be considering at this time. So there's, um, there, there's a lot that's gone into this and there has been discussion at the, at the council level. And for the most part, there has been unanimous or near unanimous support at the council level for the votes that we have taken on this. And so that brings us to where we are here tonight. And, um, uh, council, I look for action one way or another on this unless there are additional comments or questions. Councilmember Carter?
Um, I would like to make the motion if you're ready.
I believe we are ready to make the motion, yes.
So I would move a resolution adopting title and ballot language pertaining to proposed amendments to city charter relating to ranked choice voting method for electing the mayor and city council members to be submitted to the qualified voters of the city of Bloomington at the state general election on November 3rd, 2020.
Second, Councilmember Lohman?
We have a motion by Councilmember Carter and a second by Councilmember Lohman to, uh, adopt the resolution, uh, regarding ballot language pertaining to a proposed amendment related to ranked choice voting. Hearing no further discussion, Ms. Christensen?
Thank you. Beloga? Mayor Bossy?
Aye.
Carter?
Aye.
Coulter?
Aye.
Lohman?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Motion carries six one with Beloga voting in the negative. So carries and, uh, we will be on the ballot in November with ranked choice voting. And as Ms. Wilson said, I, uh, I know as I came in this evening, she was already working on the FAQs to try and, uh, really clarify and polish those up and get those on the website as quickly as possible. So the public education piece will begin just as quickly as possible. From the city's perspective, trying to explain and, uh, help people understand what ranked choice voting is and what it isn't. Again, as has been stated from an advocacy role, this, that's not the role of the, of the city. We will not advocate one way or another, but it is, uh, it's an information and an educational role by the city. So thank you very much for that. Now we can move on. Now we can move on to item six, our consent business. Uh, Councilmember Martin, I believe you have the consent agenda this evening.
I do. Thank you very much, mayor. Um, so at this point, the only hold I have is on item 6.1. I guess, uh, one last call for any other holds? Okay. Uh, seeing none, mayor, I'd be happy to move, uh, approval of items 6.2 through 6.7.
Beloga, second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Martin and a second by Councilmember Beloga to accept, uh, the consent business as stated. Hearing no further discussion, Ms. Christensen?
Thank you. Beloga?
Aye.
Mayor Bussey?
Aye.
Carter?
Aye.
Coulter?
Aye.
Loman?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Nelson? And Nelson, you are muted.
So close. Uh, aye.
Thank you.
Motion carries seven-zero. Councilmember Martin, uh, item 6.1.
Thank you very much, mayor. Uh, so the city has received, uh, a variety of donations over the past few weeks. Uh, just wanted to thank everybody for contributing to the community and, uh, shout out a couple in particular. Uh, it looks like Enterprise Products Incorporated with 500 N95 masks, uh, provided to our community outreach and engagement division, uh, Hennepin South Services Collaborative, uh, and their support for our public health team. Uh, additionally, the Minneapolis Foundation, uh, for providing some funding to help with Census 2020 awareness, uh, and just another quick good job, uh, to our community for being ahead of the ball on that one. Uh, and then just, uh, a variety of donations to the Bloomington Police Department. I saw some from Girl Scouts, Sam's Club, uh, Golden Walk, Jimmy John's, uh, various churches, uh, and many residents. So, uh, just wanted to thank everybody in such a, uh, kind of a complicated COVID situation for pulling together and, uh, making sure our staff, uh, and our department have what they need. Uh, so if there's no other comments to that, I'm happy to make a motion.
Please do.
Uh, mayor, I will move that, uh, we adopt the resolution accepting the donations as listed.
Second?
We have a motion by Councilmember Martin and a second by Councilmember Coulter to adopt item 6.1, donations to the city. Hearing no further discussion, Ms. Christensen?
Thank you. Beloga?
Aye.
Mayor Bussey?
Aye.
Carter?
Aye.
Coulter?
Aye.
Loman?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Motion carries seven-zero. Thank you much. Thanks, Councilmember Martin, for taking care of consent for us this evening. We can move on to item number seven, which is our public comment period and, uh, 7.1, which is a response to prior meeting's public comments. Mr. Verbrugge, who typically would be sitting about five seats away from me, I think, uh, was, he was originally over at the, uh, Rotary Presentation on Race and Equality and then I believe was, uh, had some car trouble. And so we've got him remotely and we'll turn it over. Mr. Verbrugge, are you there?
I am, Mr. Mayor and council members. Thank you. Uh, I'm in a hotel lobby, which is why I'm continuing to wear the face mask while I do this. Um, so at our meeting on July 6th, we had several, uh, people who, uh, provided comment to the council. Uh, two of them had, uh, questions that they asked for follow-up on, uh, specifically from the city manager. Uh, Andrew Thule asked about an update on the garbage contract, uh, for organized collection, uh, with the Consortium of Bloomington Hallers. And, uh, I can report to Mr. Thule and to, uh, the community that the mayor and I did execute that contract last week. Uh, the terms of the contract were exactly the terms that the council had authorized, uh, a couple of months ago. And the back and forth over those couple of months was just the narrowing in on the, on the finer language, but if there's any question about that, uh, our city attorney or our public works director can speak, uh, directly to as well. So the, the, uh, contract with the Bloomington Hallers is, uh, has been executed. And then Mr. Kevin Anderson had a number of, uh, questions, most of them related to development projects that were, uh, pending or proceeding in the South Loop Development District, including the water park project, the expo, uh, the parking ramp that was, uh, being built as part of the water park project. And, uh, all of those projects are, um, currently, uh, in suspended status until we know the, uh, we have a better idea of what the economic and financial picture is coming, uh, out of the pandemic here and at what point that, uh, might become more clear. So there's no work that's occurring on those projects at this time. Mr. Anderson also had, uh, some concerns about the composition of the Port Authority and that the mayor and council member, uh, have seats on the Port Authority feeling that that's a conflict. And it's important to note that the, uh, creation of the Port Authority allows for the, uh, uh, for the port, for the body itself to have two members of the city council represented and has been that way, uh, I, I think as long as anyone at the city can remember. And then, uh, finally, uh, a comment from Mr. Anderson about, uh, the council using the COVID-19 pandemic, uh, as a cover to advance ranked choice voting, uh, and that one doesn't, uh, uh, really require a, a response from me, but just noting his, his concern about that issue. Other than that, Mr. Mayor and council members, uh, that's what I have to report.
Thank you, Mr. Verbrugge. With that, we can move to item 7.2, which is our public comment period, which is a 20-minute period where we take public comment on items not on tonight's agenda. As we have done in the past, everyone will have, uh, five minutes to, to speak and, uh, we will not be responding at this meeting. We, uh, will put, uh, we will respond at our next meeting, as Mr. Verbrugge just did, to any questions or comments or specific, uh, items that you have. Uh, specifically though, we will, if, if there is a, a simple answer to a, a question, um, you know, when is, when is, uh, summer fete next year? We, we will be able to answer those quickly, but for the most part, we won't be answering specific questions, uh, brought up during public comment. So we, um, we have, as I said, 20 minutes, five minutes each, and I believe we've got two people who have called in ahead of time. Uh, Danielle Garbina called in and I believe Andrew Thule called in as well, saying that they wanted to be part of public comment. So Ms. Wilson, can you help us make that connection?
I'll do my best, Mr. Mayor. Our operator this evening is Jerome. Jerome, can you hear me?
Yes, good evening, everyone.
Good evening. Jerome, do you have a caller on the line named Danielle Garbina? And if so, would you please patch her through?
Sure, one more, please. And the line of Danielle Garbina is now open.
Good evening, Ms. Garbina, welcome. Good evening.
Thank you. So I think that you can hear me?
Yep, we can. Go ahead.
Okay, great. Um, so I'm calling tonight about public comment. Um, public comment during council meetings is needed so that the concerns of Bloomington residents can be heard. The offer to hear residents before a city council meeting is a great idea, but not at the expense of not being seen and heard during a council meeting. Some residents might prefer to speak before a council meeting, but others might have information that the general public should hear, be it calling in or in person, and other might have information the general public should see and hear, such as all Bloomington needed to hear the concerns of Valley View and the need to save all of Bloomington parks by changing the city charter. All Bloomington residents needed to hear about the concerns residents have with council not abiding by the recommendations of the commission, such as not to put RBC, RCV on the ballot for this November, or staff, such as informing council that a draft of rules and procedures for RCV should be done before the council votes. All Bloomington residents should hear the concerns residents have with the city and staff council not requiring compliance to city code, such as the planning commission's recent approval to recommend an expansion of Dar El Farouk, regardless that the property already negatively impacts the park and neighboring properties, that the expansion will put the trips of Friday over 1,000 and that the city stated on March 24th, 2011, that in quotes, "The proposed reuse of the school with a variety of functions, functions maximizes the occupancy of the vacant school," end quote. All Bloomington residents should hear that the city protects low-down city neighborhoods in other areas of Bloomington, such as the neighborhood on the west side of 35W near Life Church. The city has limited Life Church students' population to 135 students and staff stated in an email that if the school population was expanded, it would not be, it would not, in quotes, "be possible without the place of assembly using vacating," end quote, but staff recommended an expansion of Dar El Farouk. Life Church and Dar El Farouk both are about nine acres and have about the same number of students. Both are places of as- of assembly, except Life Church has a parking lot of 130 spaces and a demand less than 130, while Dar El Farouk has 155, 151 parking spaces and a demand for 263 spaces, and yet the city recommends an expansion of Dar El Farouk while indicating an expansion of Life Church would not, in quote, "be possible without the place of assembly used vacating," end quote. All residents should hear about this unequal application of city code. While Life Church is approved for a school and a place of assembly, Dar El Farouk is approved for a school, a place of assembly, a community center, a weekend school, and also has an office park and is the headquarters for the Islamic University of Minnesota, and yet staff sent an email that the expansion of Life Church would not, quote, "be possible without the place of assembly used vacating," end quote, and it, and yet recommends the expansion of the more intensely used property of Dar El Farouk. Removing public comment during the city council meetings does not meet the new transparency pillar. If there are people who are not comfortable speaking in front of the council during public comment, then there are other solutions, such as offering to have staff or city council member read citizens' emails or allow residents to call in, but do not remove public comment during the council meeting. Taking public comment away is not being transparent. Again, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Garbina. Appreciate it. Ms. Wilson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Jerome, do we have caller Andrew Thule on the line?
Andrew Thule, your line is open.
Can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can. Good afternoon, Mr. Thule. Go ahead.
Hey. Um, I'd like to actually talk about, uh, the poor communication that I've, uh, personally witnessed, uh, in this city. Uh, recently I sent a letter, um, on July 21st to Mr. Tim Bussey, uh, and this is kind of what the letter went. I'm writing this letter in response to your recent study session where you stated, "I usually advise the council to follow charter recommendations." The charter not only voted once, um, in the commission, but voted twice and it was a no vote each time. In the democracy I live in, you only get one vote and not a redo to push for the proper outcome of the vote. Um, for y'all to continue to push for changing our voting system without a true cost study and that cost study happened to actually come tonight during the council meeting, um, without due diligence that study, um, this is fundamentally wrong, especially, um, during the pandemic and the potential shortfall in our tax system. Um, it has also, uh, become very clear, our city is working on non-essential business, um, during this time, and when they promised, uh, that they will not. I'm also very disappointed, um, with, with the move that I observed in the last study session to take away the, the public comment. Um, you should allow more forms of communication and not less in br- in embracing the seventh pillar of transparency and engagement that you guys have been working on. Um, Tim, be a man of your wor- uh, word and, uh, allow more forms of communication and not, not less. So basically lead by example. Um, as of today, uh, Tim has, uh, yet, uh, to acknowledge my email, uh, on July 21st. And I want to say that many others have reached out, um, to, to mayor and other council members and not received communications back, which is really wrong of an elected official. Um, so no communications back is just r- really sad. Um, on July 6th, um, I also spoke of concerns over at Smith Park, um, and, and, uh, was a car parked on a bike lane and I had to call an emergency. Uh, Mr. Patrick Martin, um, emailed me during the council meeting on July, uh, 6th, saying that he would follow up with me. Um, I'm still waiting for that follow-up. I just want to know that this is very commonplace amongst our residents, not to get emails back, um, on things that actually concern the people. So these are just two examples where, where one resident, myself, did not receive communications from our, our elected officials. And I assure you, I'm not the only one saying this in this community. So please embrace your seventh pillar of transparency engagement, um, and start to, start to get back to your constituents, your people that live in this city. As you guys know, I've been here for 48 years. Um, and, and Mr. Verbrugge, in the next public comment, um, I want, uh, to know what you, the city manager and the CEO of the city are going to do to better, uh, better increase communications, uh, with, with the public. You oversee this, uh, this city or this corporation and I would like to see some better management and, uh, some more, more transparent communications. In other words, what are you doing to get council members, mayor, and yourself to communicate back to the residents? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Thule. Ms. Wilson, do we have others?
Jerome, do we have any other callers wishing to speak on agenda item 7.2, the public comment period?
All right, uh, listeners, anybody wants to speak for agenda, please press star one We have the line of Ms. Elizabeth Longo, who wants to speak. Your line is now open.
Hello, thank you. My name is Elizabeth Longo. I'm a resident in Hillcrest-Southbrook area, formerly lived 14-plus years over in east side, east Bloomington. I would like to address the transparency and safety issue on behalf of the entire city of Bloomington. Since March or April, in the name of COVID-19, numerous hotels in east Bloomington and some west, from what I understand, mostly along American Boulevard, have been contracted as temporary housing for homeless population, from which I understand many are actually addicted to drugs and also have untreated mental illness or other issues. There are large blocks of rooms in many ho- motels and hotels that were contracted and from what I understand paid for by various, uh, churches and Hennepin County. From what I understand, the city of Bloomington has received no funds for this endeavor. I wonder if these groups are going to continue to contract motels for, uh, quote-unquote "permanent" housing, would Bloomington City Council need to have a public hearing to eventually have city council vote to rezone those areas and then make sure there is appropriate infrastructure in place to house large groups of people humanely with severe needs such as addiction, mental illness, poverty, domestic abuse situations, which would be the only humane thing to do, not be a dumping ground. Bloomington Police Department, from what I understand, has experienced that since March, April, May, 30 to 40% of what I understand, all Bloomington police calls have been related to that area where they are contracted for temporary housing. I understand that businesses and residents all along those areas have been burdened and have been calling police and strongly, we are encouraging them to start account, uh, attending these city council meetings. And then I would also like to just address that it is very sad that there was no, to my knowledge, there was absolutely zero, uh, city council or leadership representation backing our police and law enforcement at the beautiful Back the Blue and Bloomington Patriots rally that we had right on our city grounds. And then the last issue I did, I would like to say, we need to, as part of phase two, open up these council meetings to the public whereby if you need to vote on it, to make a resolution to move your meetings out of city council chambers and into the beautiful, not being used right now, theater slash auditorium that we have where we could safely social distance and you could actually, um, it would benefit and behoove you to see who your voters are that elected you, to have a name and a face to those, um, constituents as opposed to just hearing me or somebody else on the phone. Uh, thank you. God, God bless you. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Longo. Appreciate it.
Jerome, do we? Do we have any other callers for agenda item 7.2?
Yes, the next person who wants to speak for agenda 7.2 is the line of Michelle Justin. Your line is now open.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Could, could you repeat your name for us, please?
Michelle Justin.
Good evening. Welcome. Go ahead.
Good evening, mayor and council members. My name is Michelle Justin. I'd like to start off by thanking Councilmember Loman for coming out and showing support at our Back the Blue rally this past Saturday. The police were great. They showed a bunch of support for us as much as they could. My next topic is back on the hotels and the homeless people that have been put in our city. My friends live over off of Lyndale and their kids are no longer able to ride their bikes around the block because there's alcohol bottles, empty bottles all over the place. I'm going to start by just asking Mr. Verbrugge, what is the homeless costing us in terms of city resources? How much are we being given back from Hennepin County? Have they paid us? What percentage of our police resources have been devoted to answering calls at those hotels? And what are the ongoing costs for supporting the homeless? How much does county owe us for the city healthcare? Mr. Verbergi, what can you do to keep us safe and protect us from homeless encantments like what's going on in Minneapolis right now? I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Justin.
Jerome, do we have any other callers for Agenda Item seven point two?
Yes, the next person who wants to speak for Agenda seven point two is the lineup Becky Stromeyer. Your line's now open.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Could you repeat your name, please, just so we have it on the record?
Becky Stromeyer.
Thank you, Ms. Stromeyer. Welcome.
All right. Good evening, Mayor Bussie and council members. Again, my name is Becky Stromeyer. I'm the co-chair of the Bloomington Patriots and one of the organizers for the Back the Blue event that was held at Civic Plaza over the weekend. I want to first of all thank Mr. Lowman for stopping by to show his support for our wonderful police department here in Bloomington. It's truly appreciated that you took the time to join us for a bit. We saw between four hundred and six hundred guests throughout the three hours and had fun making cards and pictures for our police officers. We also hosted a lemonade stand, which raised seven hundred dollars for Kevin Tran, who, as you all know, was shot during an armed robbery here in Bloomington. He's a small business owner, a friend to all, and truly a beloved member of our community. On behalf of the Bloomington Patriots, we wish him all the best in his continued recovery and look forward to seeing Penn Lake Roast Beef back open for business soon. We got so much feedback at our event about the current state of our city, but the number one message we kept hearing over and over was how great our police department is and how much the residents of this city support them. Chief Potts has done an exceptional job leading the BPD through many challenging times, and his efforts are noticed all across the state. While there's always room for improvement in every department, we should be focusing our efforts as a city on lifting our officers up instead of tearing them down and finding problems that don't exist. Back the Blue was the start of that process, and we hope more city leaders will come together with us in the future to celebrate the Bloomington Police Department's hard work and heroic officers. Thank you all, and have a good night.
Thank you, Ms. Stromeyer.
Jerome, do we have any other callers for Agenda Item seven point two?
Yes, the next person who wants to speak for Agenda seven point two is the lineup Russell Bernison. Your line's now open.
Yes, this is Russell Bernison. Welcome, Mayor Bussie and council. I just got, I don't have a prepared statement like the rest of the people did earlier tonight. I'm just speaking from the heart here. I agree with Jack on like this RCV and process and all this stuff. It seems like if we don't agree with what the city council wants, we're kind of shut out, and I've seen that for the last fifteen years. It's not just this city council, and I go back to what Jack said about no unnecessary business to be conducted during the COVID, and you've done a lot of unnecessary business that was not an emergency to get done, such as RCV. That's just my thoughts and my comments. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Bernison.
There are no more Q. Who wants to speak for Agenda seven point two? Please continue.
Just to clarify, Jerome, there's no one else wishing to speak for Agenda Item seven point two?
No one. You may continue.
Thank you.
All right, seeing no one else coming forward, I will close the public comment period for this evening and thank everyone for their comments, and we'll move on to Item eight in our agenda. And Item eight point one, which is a public hearing for new on-sale three-point-two malt liquor license application at the Hampton Inn in Bloomington. Mr. Junker, I think you're going to help us with this?
I'm having problems with my video again tonight. Oh, maybe I got it.
There it is. We see you.
Finally. All right, yes, Torgus and Properties Incorporated, owners of the Hampton Inn in Bloomington, five thousand four hundred American Boulevard, looking to add three-two-point, three-point-two percent malt liquor to their menu. Everything's checked out and looking for your approval.
Counsel, any questions of Mr. Junker? Councilmember Carter, is your hand still up, or is that a new hand up?
Mayor, my hand is still up, but I would be happy to, well, never mind. I know we have to open the public hearing.
We have a public hearing to do first. Yes, thank you. All right, with that, I will open the public hearing on this. This is Item eight point one, a public hearing for new on-sale three-point-two malt liquor license application at the Hampton Inn in Bloomington. Open it as a public hearing. Ms. Wilson?
Jerome, do we have any callers wishing to address the council on Agenda Item eight point one?
Again, anybody wants to speak for Agenda eight point one? Please press star one. No one wants to speak for Agenda eight point one? You may continue.
Thank you.
Very good. Seeing no one coming forward electronically or in person, I would look for a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Mayor, I have a second, but I had a question for you.
Please, Councilmember Lowman. First, we've got a motion by Councilmember Carter and a second by Councilmember Lowman to close the public hearing. Does this pertain to a public hearing, Councilmember Lowman, or the issue in general?
It has to do with just a point of order, just a recommendation to the chair, just to make us move a little faster. I wonder if it makes sense to open some of these public hearings jointly, eight-point-two and eight-point-three moving forward, so we could get through those a little quicker. Just want to throw that out there as a possibility.
Appreciate that. I think we'll stick with the agenda for this evening. I think, I appreciate that. We'll look at that in the future. I think generally, we try and keep them as separate as we can, but for this evening, we will move it forward. So, we have a motion and a second to close the public hearing. No further discussion. Ms. Christensen?
Thank you. Beloga?
Aye.
Mayor Bussie?
Aye.
Carter?
Aye.
Coulter?
Aye.
Lowman?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero to close the public hearing. Counsel, any further discussion? Or if not, I'd look for a motion for Item eight point one.
Mayor, I can make that motion.
Do we have a second?
Second, Martin.
Got a motion by Councilmember Carter and a second by Councilmember Martin to approve Item eight point one, new on-sale three-point-two malt liquor license for Hampton Inn in Bloomington. Hearing no further discussion. Ms. Christensen?
Thank you. Beloga?
Aye.
Mayor Bussie?
Aye.
Carter?
Aye.
Coulter?
Aye.
Lowman?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero. Call line eight point two now, which is another public hearing for new on-sale wine license and on-sale three-point-two malt liquor license application for El Guanaco Bakery and Cafe. Mr. Junker?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor and council. Yes, El Guanaco Bakery and Cafe, open at seventy-four-five Portland. Been open for a little bit now. We were just trying to finalize some things on the license and again, looking to add some beer and wine to their menu.
Counsel, any questions on this one? No questions, I will open the public hearing. This is a public hearing for Item eight point two, new on-sale wine license and on-sale three-point-two malt liquor license application for El Guanaco Bakery and Cafe.
Jerome, do we have any callers wishing to address the council on Agenda Item eight point two?
Again, anybody wants to speak for Agenda eight point two? Please press star one. There are no one who wants to speak for Agenda eight point two? You may continue.
Thank you.
Seeing no one coming forward, I look for a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved, Councilmember Lowman.
Do we have a second?
Second, Martin.
We have a motion by Councilmember Lowman and a second by Councilmember Martin to close the public hearing. No further discussion. Ms. Christensen?
Thank you. Beloga?
Aye.
Mayor Bussie?
Aye.
Carter?
Aye.
Coulter?
Aye.
Lowman?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
And Nelson?
Aye.
Motion to close the public hearing passes seven zero. Counsel, I look for action on this.
Mayor, I'd be happy to move an on-sale wine liquor license for a three-point-two malt liquor license application for EL, Bonago Bakery and Cafe.
Do we have a second?
Second, Martin.
We have a motion by Lowman and a second by Martin for a new on-sale wine license and on-sale three-point-two malt liquor license for El Guanaco Bakery and Cafe. Hearing no further discussion. Ms. Christensen?
Thank you. Beloga?
Aye.
Mayor Bussie?
Aye.
Carter? Can you repeat that? Councilmember Carter?
Aye.
Thank you. Councilmember Coulter?
Aye.
Lowman?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero. With that, we'll move to Item eight point three, another public hearing. This for a new on-sale intoxicating liquor license application for Doubletree Bloomington, Minneapolis South. Mr. Junker?
Yes, thank you again, Mr. Mayor and council. We're setting up for an ownership change of the Doubletree, just trying to get a license ready for them when that transition happens. New to Minnesota, but they've got a few other hotels and everything's checked out, so looking for your approval.
Counsel, questions of Mr. Junker? Hearing none, I will open the public hearing. This is Item eight point three, new on-sale intoxicating liquor license application for Doubletree Bloomington, Minneapolis South.
Jerome, do we have any callers wishing to provide public comment on Agenda Item eight point three?
Again, anybody wants to speak for Agenda eight point three? Please press star one. No one who wants to speak for Agenda eight point three? You may continue.
Thank you.
Seeing no one coming forward, I look for a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved, Councilmember Lowman.
Second, Beloga.
We've got a motion by Lowman and a second by Beloga to close the public hearing on Item eight point three. Hearing no further discussion. Ms. Christensen?
Thank you. Beloga?
Aye.
Mayor Bussie?
Aye.
Carter?
Aye.
Coulter?
Aye.
Lowman?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Motion to close the hearing passes seven zero. Counsel, any further discussion? If not, I would look for a motion on eight point three.
Mayor, I'll move to approve an on-sale liquor license application for Doubletree Bloomington, Minneapolis South.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Lowman and a second by Councilmember Carter to approve new on-sale intoxicating liquor license for Doubletree Bloomington, Minneapolis South. Hearing no further discussion. Ms. Christensen?
Thank you. Beloga?
Aye.
Mayor Bussie?
Aye.
Carter?
Aye.
Coulter?
Aye.
Lowman?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Junker, for getting us through those three on-sale liquor license applications. Appreciate it. Thanks much.
Thank you, Mayor.
With that, we'll move on to Item eight point four, which is another public hearing. This is for standards for placement of wireless telecommunications facilities in public right-of-way. Mr. Johnson from our planning department is going to help us with this, and I believe it's just Mr. Johnson. Mr. Johnson, good evening. Nick, are you there? You're still muted. There, you're unmuted.
Sorry about that, folks.
There you are.
Mayor Bussie, members of the city council, rookie mistake there. Yeah, appreciate the introduction. I'm going to share my screen if I can, Chris. I don't know if I need to be made a...
One minute.
But, yeah, we also have Glenn Markagard on the call here for this item as well. I characterize him as certainly an expert witness on these matters as well, but just to get into our PowerPoint slides, I just have a few slides here for you. Hopefully, you can see that okay now.
Yes, we can. Go ahead, please.
Okay, so we are bringing forward a ordinance before you this evening, and what it pertains to is the deployment of smart, small wireless facilities in public right-of-way. It is a technology that is becoming more prevalent, and there is a greater desire to deploy this, to deploy these facilities in more areas. So, just in terms of background, a little overview of the wireless network in Bloomington and just generally speaking across the country, what people are more used to or more familiar with are these macro sites. So, you see taller cell towers with a large number of antennas, you know, and these are larger antennas. What we're talking about this evening is newer technology that involves smaller antennas that are higher frequency radio waves or shorter range, often referred to as 5G. But those are the macro sites that I showed you an image of before. There's approximately one hundred and twenty of these macro sites around the community. So, here you just see a general community map with all these different sites by provider. Moving on to, just providing some background about wireless facilities in the right-of-way, the city adopted original provisions in nineteen ninety-eight. There are a number of antennas and wireless facilities in the right-of-way currently more in commercial areas, but with the, this newer technology coming forward, we see that there is going to be a much more keen interest in deploying more of these facilities in the future. So, what our current standards regulate is it pushes for colocation or replacement of existing poles, regulates height, you can't extend more than fifteen feet, the existing height, it regulates the antenna size, it regulates the deployment of ground equipment, and just minimizing the visual impact on the right-of-way. And some folks have asked us, you know, why is the city or why do cities regulate this stuff? Why are they keenly interested in it, particularly for our Public Works Department who has to manage a wide variety of infrastructure in a confined space? It's really important to manage these spaces in an effective way, just from a spacing standpoint as well as, as I mentioned, that visual impact. So, in twenty seventeen, the state, a new statute was adopted or passed at the state legislature, signed by the governor, that created new standards, and I think what the big push with this for is that what the wireless installers were finding is that there was really disparate or kind of a wide variety of different standards as you went to jurisdiction to jurisdiction for this type of equipment. So, they pushed to have a more uniform set of standards adopted. This involved some performance standards, such as allowing new poles, height limits of fifty feet or the existing condition, and it also had a lot of language pertaining to the permitting process and how much cities could collect from a fee standpoint for allowing these utilities, quasi utilities in a way to be deployed, these facilities in the public right-of-way. Just to note, the statute did allow some discretion for cities to enact some performance standards to, again, manage the public right-of-way, and it did leave some discretion for cities to implement a conditional use permit process in single-family zones. We'll talk about that on a following slide. But this is the existing condition when it comes to small wireless facility sites in the city. There's approximately forty-five of them. You know, we continue to get permits in the Public Works Department again. As you can see, there are these little purple triangles. Most of them are concentrated around the Mall of America and the Normandale Lake Office Park or that district up there, and where they're needed is where there's, you know, higher tax or demand on the wireless network. But we are starting to see them be deployed in residential areas in the future as, you know, the public's demand for faster and faster wireless service continues to rise. So, right now, of the forty-five, ten-plus of these are in the public right-of-way. You know, you're going to need ten of these small wireless facilities for every one macro site. So, if you do the math, that we have one hundred and twenty, and that's just kind of an estimate, but if we have one hundred and twenty macro sites, you know, could we see over a thousand of these small cell facilities, you know, way off in the future? Couldn't put a date on it, but just kind of projecting how the deployment of this facilities or infrastructure is going to go. This is an example of a small wireless facility. It was a replacement of a utility pole. This one was done over in the west side of town, and this was, again, one of the instances where it was in a residentially zone right-of-way, which is currently requires a conditional use permit. So, this application did go to the Planning Commission. You can see what it involved is it looks like a pretty standard wooden utility pole. It just involves the deployment of this antenna at the top of it, a canister antenna is a pretty common design that we see. You'll also see other related equipment that's mounted on the pole, like radios, cables, cables, other things. And then you'll, uh, often also see some ground equipment, typically a handhole for fiber optic connections or meters, those types of things. So this just gives you a flavor of kind of what they look like. Um, in terms of why we're adopting this, A, uh, the biggest point is just to bring our standards into, uh, conformity with the state statutes and really bring it up-to-date, given that, uh, more significant update, uh, state law in 2017. And then in terms of what are the changes from our current standards? Well, we increased, uh, the size of the facility to be consistent with the definition in state, uh, statute, so increasing it from three to six cubic feet. Uh, facility height, as I mentioned, it established a 50-foot, uh, uniform height standard or the existing condition, can't go taller than either of those two. Um, and then, uh, new poles, we, we do now allow new poles, uh, per the state law, which we currently don't allow. Um, it still, uh, would encourage, uh, the replacement of existing poles, and we does also include a separation provision, meaning that you can have one new pole for every 600 feet, that's basically about a city block. Uh, there was some discussion about planning commission as to, you know, how, if that inhibits the deployment of this, uh, technology in an unreasonable way. Keep in mind that, uh, they can always replace existing poles as well as, uh, lease space from private landowners, not in the public right-of-way too. So there are other options. Uh, there was some modest, uh, amendments to the performance standards for ground equipment in terms of separation from intersections or sidewalks, those types of things. And then I think the biggest aspect, uh, to the, the ordinance is just making, uh, these facilities a permitted use in all of our zoning districts. So we are not recommending, the planning commission is not recommending, uh, that a conditional use permit, uh, be required for these, uh, facilities in residentially zone districts. Uh, and the main reason being is that if the performance standards are pretty set in stone on the state level, and then, uh, we can, uh, we can also, uh, regulate our own specific performance standards as they pertain to Bloomington through a permitting process. There's not a ton of, uh, value, uh, in a conditional use permit process, just as anecdotal, but in the few processes that we have gone through, there's been, uh, no public interest in those thus far via mailed notice or through the paper. Um, in terms on the public engagement and correspondence, uh, standpoint, uh, I want the council to know that we did proactively reach out to all of the small cell, uh, permit holders and applicants that we have worked with in the last few years. Uh, out of those that we contacted, Verizon Wireless was the only, uh, applicant or installer who provided us specific feedback. As you can see in your packet, they did provide a redlined, uh, version of the ordinance. Uh, so what we did at planning commission is we color-coded their requested changes, uh, into those that staff supported, and, uh, it was really valuable, uh, getting it from the, the applicant side. Uh, it's good feedback. We did support, uh, many of those definitional and, uh, permit process changes that Verizon, uh, point, uh, clarified or pointed out. Uh, and then there was some that they requested, uh, specifically, uh, the elimination of a separation requirement or a, a reduction in that, uh, for new poles, and then, uh, elimination of a surface size performance standard that the city has had, and then, uh, removal of cross-references to our zoning code. Uh, we, the staff did not support that. The planning commission did review that with us and, uh, did support the staff's position on that. So did recommend, uh, that Verizon's changes that staff supported go forward, uh, while not recommending others. So planning commission is recommending, uh, the adoption of this ordinance. I should note, staff is also recommending the adoption of a, uh, resolution of summary publication. So I'm happy to take any questions.
Counsel, any questions of Mr. Johnson on this? Councilmember Lohman?
I just wanted to ask, uh, one thing, Mayor and, uh, uh, Mr. Johnson. Uh, I, I know there was that, uh, 600-foot, uh, separation piece there, and one of the concerns that Verizon had raised, uh, in there was that, uh, if you have to kind of build those two things and also the, uh, you know, that, that, uh, that there was, uh, if you have other utilities, they, they're not subject to this, that same type of standard. Could you help kind, address both those two ideas? Hopefully I've been able to clearly kind of state that, uh, uh, concisely, uh, for you. But, um, I am just curious about that, because it, I mean, it seemed like they were making a pretty good point there, and I just wanted to understand our, 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 uh, opposition to that.
Mr. Johnson?
Yeah, Mayor Bussey and, uh, councilmember Lohman, thanks for that question. That's, uh, a fair point. What I would say to that is that, uh, the, the whole idea of, uh, kind of regulating the deployment of these facilities is to not clutter the right-of-way. So you think about, uh, the ability to reduce the separation. Right now, currently, you've got utility poles that overhead electrical, you got light poles. There's a number of poles that already exist currently. And so, uh, I guess what we would respond back to the, uh, to the applicant, to the, uh, installer, not applicants of the small cell permits, not applicant in this case, but, uh, what we respond back to them is that there's a multitude of opportunities to, to get these, uh, facilities either in the right-of-way or nearby in, uh, private property. And so I don't think the ordinance with this separation requirement is, uh, overly restrictive and not allowing the deployment of these. I think that, uh, in some cases, uh, you know, Verizon or another, uh, another provider would like to kind of control their own destiny, to have their own, their own multiple facilities, particularly in high-volume areas, uh, as opposed to leasing space or replacing a pole, say, an XL pole or another pole, a city-owned pole. Um, you know, you know, that, that might be, uh, an element of convenience for them, uh, but, uh, it's important for us not to clutter our right-of-way with multiple poles all in a row when we already have a number of utility poles in the right-of-way.
Thanks for that clarification. Oh, Mayor, and I think I'll just state now, uh, before we take a vote, um, for a couple of years, several years, I've worked in the telecommunication industry, um, but I no longer work in that industry, just in case there's, uh, uh, any conflict of interest.
Thank you, councilmember Lohman. Counsel, any additional questions, comments? Seeing none. Uh, this is a public hearing. Do we, is the applicant or are any applicants or interested parties available to speak? Ms. Wilson?
I am not certain. Um, the council received written communication from Comcast, um, late this afternoon, and they indicated that they may call in to provide testimony, but we will work through the operator as...
Very good. Well, with that, then, let's open this public hearing. Public hearing for standards for placement of wireless telecommunications facilities in public rights of way.
Jerome, are you there?
Yes, I'm here.
Great. Jerome, do we have any callers for agenda item 8.4?
All right, anybody who wants to speak for agenda 8.4, please press star one. And Carly Werner, who wants to speak, your lines now open.
Thank you so much. Good evening, Mayor Bussey and councilmembers.
Good evening, welcome.
And I will, thank you so much for having me, and I apologize for our late-to-the-party communication this afternoon. I appreciate Mr. Johnson's presentation and that he, uh, had communicated with the wireless provider, um, prior to, uh, presenting this ordinance tonight, and, uh, I want to say we weren't part of that group, and that's kind of part of, I think, what our, uh, statement is tonight, is that, you know, many cities have been looking at updating their wireless ordinances, understandably so, so much has changed and very fast. And of course, the state statute that Mr. Johnson mentioned certainly prompted a lot of those updating. Um, and we have not, you know, really, uh, participated much, and that is because there is an exemption that we point out in our letter, um, in the state statute that specifically calls out facilities that are on the cable strand. And, um, if you see the letter, you'll kind of see that the formal kind of lay out of the, the letter that I'm referring to, the statute, the state statute. And, um, that is mainly and particularly our Wi-Fi facilities, um, that, as you know, we provide, uh, Wi-Fi throughout the city to our customers and non-customers alike, and of course during this, uh, pandemic, the COVID pandemic, you know, we open those up free. Um, we do things like that, you know, periodically. So, um, those facilities we're talking about. And reading these city stats, the ordinance that's before you tonight, it wasn't clear to us that that exemption was, uh, certainly laid out well and really out. I, I think there was, reading it, there, we thought maybe there could be some confusion going forward if those facilities were covered by this ordinance. And our point is certainly we don't want to have that discussion with the city when it's happening, right? When we need to service a, um, fix, you know, one of those facilities on, on the, on the strand, on the cable strand. Um, and so wanted to have that discussion now, and so it's not at an inconvenient time later, uh, you know, while we're out there kind of doing the work. And so I guess our ask really is maybe i- if you could hold out the, the vote and have those discussions, uh, to make sure, you know, the definitions are clear and all providers, um, with, with wireless facilities are kind of on, on the same page and understand with the city, you know, what their expectations are. Um, and so there's no confusion going forward. Thank you very much.
Thank you. As you were talking, Mr. Johnson, I see was working his way through the code. What, what do you have for us, Mr. Johnson there?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Bussey. What I was gonna say is that, you know, this came up with, uh, in our discussion with, uh, Verizon as well with, as it relates to Crawford, Crawford references with our code with chapter 19. What I would say to the caller's point is that state law preempts, uh, city code, city ordinance, and, uh, the same, uh, the same confidence or the same sentiment that we pass down to Verizon is that, y- you know, what their concern was is that staff, uh, future staff, not the current staff, would not, uh, you know, uh, understand the interpretation with respect to, uh, how state law, uh, preempt city code. What I can say to that caller is that staff fully recognizes that and acknowledges that. Uh, and in addition to that, there is a provision in chapter 19 in this ordinance that clearly states that, uh, to the extent that standards in, uh, chapter 19, as they relate to towers and antennas, uh, to the extent that the, the provisions in city code conflict with state statutes, the applicable state statute provisions who precede any standards, uh, in the city code. Uh, so we tried to be very explicit about that. We understand that, um, you know, in the regulatory framework of, uh, in, uh, state statute, there is a whole wide variety of, uh, standards and statutes that pertain to these different types of equipment, and we want to be respectful of that as much as, uh, we can. So my, my guess is I, I certainly validate the concern on the part of the caller. Uh, I don't think that this ordinance is gonna create any difficulties for them. I guess the final thing I'd say too is that in working from a timing standpoint of this ordinance, I know that Verizon and some other installers, uh, are hoping to pursue installation of additional, uh, equipment in districts that are currently, uh, zoned, single-family residential or in locations in rights-of-way. Uh, and the reason why this might be important from a timing standpoint is that currently if, uh, this ordinance were to not go forward, all of those applications would require conditional use permits, uh, that would have to be acted upon by the planning commission. Um, that's not the end of the world, uh, certainly, but it is, uh, timely from a summer construction season standpoint. So I guess those are the two things I would add.
Ms. Werner, the, that, uh, does that, uh, provision with about the, the conflicts with state statutes, does that, um, does that put your mind at ease regarding the concerns you, you raised? Did we lose you already?
Me? Sorry, Mayor. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
Oh, great. Sorry. Um, I do appreciate that, Mr. Johnson. Thank you. That does certainly help, and we did have that discussion, that state statute would, uh, preempt, preempt this, and, you know, like I said, the concern was, you know, practical, real life, when it's happening, you know, you don't want to pause, um, you know, a needed service interruption or something like that, you know, to have that conversation. But that certainly helps, and I definitely appreciate the summer construction season and how you're up against, uh, deadlines. We run into that as well. So, you know, I think I would just suggest that if, if this does become a problem, we could, you know, re, re, or an issue, we could revisit it at that time. Thank you for hearing me.
Very good. That sounds reasonable to me as well.
Yeah, Mayor Bussey, this is Nick Johnson, and just to reiterate our commitment certainly to, uh, work with them as needed. If they want to contact me, I'd be happy to, uh, discuss, uh, what their specific concerns are too.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Appreciate that. Ms. Werner, any other concerns or comments you'd like to bring forward?
No, that's all for me. Thank you so much, Mayor and Council.
Thank you.
Hearing me out tonight.
Ms. Wilson, is there anyone else on the line?
Jerome, do we have any other callers wishing to speak to agenda item 8.4?
Yes. Uh, the next person who wants to speak for agenda 8.4 is Katie Knutson. Your lines now open.
Hi.
Good evening, welcome. Could you restate your name for us so we have it for the record, please?
My name is Katie Knutson.
Ms. Knutson, welcome.
And I'm curious if you, thank you. I'm curious, I have two questions, basically. Have the health impacts of the new systems been studied and, um, and, and compared to what we currently have? And then the other question is, um, if a resident objected to one of these being installed, say, in front of their house, is there anything that they would be able to do if this was passed in the way that it's being proposed?
Mr. Johnson?
Yeah, Mayor Bussey, thanks for that question from, uh, the member of the public. And regarding the health impacts, this is a common, uh, question that we get, particularly about the 5G, uh, technology. What I can, what I would say to that is that, uh, currently the state law, um, is what it is. Um, it really does handcuff, or I should say, uh, uh, restricts what the city can do, uh, from not allowing these facilities to be deployed as long as they meet our permitting requirements and the performance standards. Uh, so we, we really don't have the authority to, uh, reject such an application based on the health aspects. Um, I don't want to, um, represent or present myself as an health expert. I have done some, uh, research, um, just on working on this, uh, subject matter in the periphery, and I think the, you know, one of the challenges that this technology is fairly new, and so I think that, uh, the early returns on some of the research is that, uh, the impacts are, uh, somewhat negligible, but that's just based on very peripheral research, uh, that I've done, and I don't want to represent myself as a, as a public health, uh, expert, uh, in any way. Um, I can say that there was a bill in committee, uh, at the last legislative session that, uh, did include, uh, that more health, uh, impacts of this technology, that studies be done on the state level, and that bill did not make it out of committee, uh, so it did not get passed. Uh, so currently, um, uh, the state law is what it is. We're obligated to abide by, uh, the state statute. Um, so that is kind of our difficulty with that. Um, with respect to a, uh, neighbor objecting or a resident objecting to having it deployed right in front of their, uh, home, I, I don't believe that there is a mechanism to do that. However, what I would say is that the public works department and the people reviewing these permits do work, uh, with the, uh, the perimeters or the applicants, uh, to try and locate them at the edge of property lines, so that, in other words, that the, uh, the burden of one of these facilities, say, it's, you don't locate it right next to someone's driveway, or you don't locate it fully right in front of someone's home, so it affects their visual impact looking out at the street. So we do push applicants to try and, uh, make, uh, the visual impact of it, uh, lessened, uh, on one particular, uh, resident. Uh, but at, at the time being, they have to locate these, uh, facilities so that they, you know, fill a certain void in a network. Uh, so we operate within, you know, what, what little, uh, authority, I guess, we do have to try and, uh, not make it, uh, an extra ordinary burden on one particular, uh, property owner or resident.
Ms. Anderson, your question, Ms. Knutson?
Um, the, I, I'm not so much concerned about the, uh, visual burden. Um, I, I'm more concerned about the health impacts, and if there were somebody who is sensitive to electromagnetic radiation or things like that, if there were a way that they could, um, object to something being put within, say, a, a hundred feet of their house or something like that, if that is an option that is being considered.
And I, I appreciate your, your concerns, Ms. Knutson. I, I do know that, um, beyond the state law, federal law prohibits us from, uh, using health considerations to, to, uh, reject, health impacts, to reject or, 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 or consider any of this. They, as long as it passes, um, you know, as long as it complies with the FCC and emissions requirements or emission standards, uh, federal law says it, it needs to be approved. We, we can't consider health concerns when we approve or deny something like this.
Wow, that is depressing to hear, but I'm glad you know that. Thank you.
Mayor Bussey, this is Nick Johnson, and if I may add one point to the caller too in that, uh, I know that the city of Bloomington wrote a letter objecting or, uh, um, attempting to revise the previous state law that was adopted in 2017, and you can certainly go back and check the, uh, the record on, uh, you know, the support of that particular amendment in committee, but I don't believe any of the Bloomington delegation, um, uh, was pushing for those changes that made the deployment of this equipment more, uh, easier for the, uh, wireless installers, I guess I'd say.
Thank you for that, Mr. Johnson. Thank you for that, Mr. Johnson. Ms. Wilson, anyone else?
Jerome, do we have any other callers wishing to address the council on agenda item 8.4?
No one other, no one who wants to speak for agenda 8.4. You may continue.
Thank you.
Seeing no one coming forward in person or electronically to comment on this, council, I'd look for a motion to close the public hearing.
I moved.
Second, Martin.
We got a motion by Councilmember Carter and a second by Councilmember Martin to close the public hearing on item 8.4. Hearing no further discussion, Ms. Christensen.
Thank you. Beloga?
Aye.
Mayor Bussey?
Aye.
Carter?
Aye.
Coulter?
Aye.
Loman?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero to close the public hearing. Counsel, any additional comment or questions on this? I do want to echo uh, Mr. Johnson's concerns about the cluttering of the right-of-way. And um, he actually, he mentioned in his presentation, the original law that talked about the right-of-way, which uh, was passed in 1998. And um, I was working at the League of Minnesota Cities at that time, and there was a, there was an extended discussion and battle about a- access to the right-of-way. For that very reason, for the cluttering of the right-of-way, not only above ground visually, but below ground as well. And I can only imagine that it's gotten even more cluttered in the 20 years since then. And so I do think uh, this is an important step forward to make sure that uh, the city of Bloomington maintains control of that clutter, the visual and the underground clutter in the right-of-way. And uh, we not only work to, to serve the, the providers who are looking to access the right-of-way, but also we serve um, the, the public's best interest in where to place things and how many things to place in the right-of-way and, and how it all works together. So, just my two cents worth. Councilmember Carter?
Good morning, Mayor. Um, so I don't want to uh, belabor the point that the caller made, but I do um, have a question just in, in terms of residents' ability to um, voice any kind of support or opposition when one of these is being placed close to their homes. Um, so if we did require a conditional use permit, would that then mean that we'd have a public hearing? And even if we did, would it really alter the outcome since there is so much state and federal um, legislation in place that mandates basically what we can and cannot do?
Uh, my sense, Councilmember Carter, is that uh, no, it wouldn't impact it at all. We could have a, uh, we could have a, a conditional use permit and, and a public hearing and so on. But ultimately, if it um, if it is uh, superseded by state and federal regulations, there frankly isn't a lot we can do regarding that provision.
So if residents were like, we just don't want it, like they didn't give a health reason for their, for the, the rationale, they just said, we just don't want it in our neighborhood, that is not, we, we still could not do anything about it. It would basically kind of be a waste of everybody's time. I, I just, I'm trying to, I just want to make sure it's, I'm clear on this.
Understand what you're saying. And maybe I'd, I'd look to uh, either our, our city manager or city attorney if uh, they have a, a bit more understanding and detail on this kind of thing. But my sense is uh, knowing that the law that was passed in 2017, I think gave a lot of leeway to, to sell companies and, and took away a lot of uh, a lot of control, local control in a lot of different ways. My sense is that um, as long as they meet the, the zoning requirements, as long as they meet the requirements laid out and set forth in, in state law, and then ultimately in what we're trying to pass here, that uh, as long as they meet those requirements, uh, they, they will, they would be approved. Mr. Verbrugge, am I reading that correctly?
Mr. Mayor, you are correct.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate, I appreciate that.
Thank you for the question. Counsel, any additional questions? If not, I'd look for some action on item 8.4.
Uh, Mayor, uh, I'm happy to move that.
Councilmember Martin?
Um, I move that we adopt the ordinance updating the city's regulations pertaining to small wireless facilities installed in the public right-of-way to ensure compliance with Minnesota statute.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Beloga, second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Martin and a second by Councilmember Beloga to uh, update the standards for placement of wireless telecommunications facilities in public rights-of-way. Hearing no further discussion, Ms. Christensen.
Thank you. Beloga?
Aye.
Mayor Bussey?
Aye.
Carter?
Aye.
Coulter?
Aye.
Loman?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero. Councilmember Martin, summary publication?
Absolutely, Mayor. I'll move that we uh, adopt a resolution authorizing summary publication of the small wireless facility ordinance.
Second, Coulter.
We have a motion by Councilmember Martin and the council, uh, second by Councilmember Coulter for uh, summary publication. No further discussion, Ms. Christensen.
Thank you. Beloga?
Aye.
Mayor Bussey?
Aye.
Carter?
Aye.
Coulter?
Aye.
Loman?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero for summary publication. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Johnson, for that. Let's move on to item 8.5, which is another public hearing. This is a change of conditional use, condition, uh, cha- change of conditional use permit, condition of approval for 9604 and 9608 Humboldt Avenue South. Mr. Centenario, good evening and welcome.
Good evening, US Mayor and members of the council. Uh, yeah, it's, it's a bit of a tongue twister, but the, the next item on your agenda is to modify uh, an existing condition of approval from a conditional use permit that was approved by the city council in 2014. Uh, so I do have a presentation. And uh, the addresses uh, of this site are 9604 and 9608 Humboldt Avenue South, uh, owned by and operated by uh, Chief's Towing. So let me get to the front here. You can see on the screen, this is the, the site, the existing conditions of the site.
Uh, Michael, we cannot, we can't see your screen yet.
Okay, I'm sorry about that.
There we go.
That better? Sorry about that.
Thanks.
So it's, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, uh, the image on the screen is for the existing conditions of the site. Uh, to the east of the site is Humboldt Avenue. Uh, that's where two existing access points are located. The north uh, street is 96th Street. Um, so the storage lot in 2014, the conditional use permit that was approved was for, for open storage of uh, vehicles and construction equipment. And so just looking at this image itself, uh, this would, this, this sort of uh, snapshot in time uh, would be consistent with what we would expect. An open storage lot for uh, you know, large vehicles and constru- construction equipment to, to include. Uh, but there were also a number of conditions related to the, uh, some physical improvements, namely uh, paving, stormwater management, uh, screening. Uh, there is a significant screen along the perimeter of the site, and then also landscaping. This is a recent street view uh, of the site along Humboldt Avenue. You can see obviously the uh, trucks in the background uh, parked and stored on the site. See the, the landscaping between the screening and uh, the street and the screening itself, uh, which is, which was a requirement that, uh, and is a requirement that extra storage uh, is screened from public right-of-way. Another image from 96th Street. Again, you can see the, the screening landscaping uh, that was uh, established as part of this uh, review process. And uh, again, the, the applicant had to meet code requirements for landscaping, uh, certain number of trees, the, the screening had to be a certain height, uh, and they complied with those standards. Well, I note that uh, in Chief's Towing, it does have contractual agreements with the city of Bloomington. And they do, they do operate another site uh, at 86th and Harriet. And you can see obviously this, this site, uh, it's been established, it's been in existence for much longer. Uh, their conditional use permit for this particular site was approved in 1997. Uh, so this site is, is used for uh, obviously for towing purposes and storage of uh, of vehicles, uh, both inoperable or, or, or maybe operable. But the, the application that the applicant uh, is applied for uh, was to modify an existing condition related to, or that was included in the 2014 approval. And that prohibits uh, any uh, storage of salvage inoperable vehicles, uh, shipping or cargo containers, uh, containers, trailers or similar receptacles. And they want uh, to uh, add, add some flexibility to, to that condition, uh, namely that uh, they operate a towing business and want to be able to use their site to store uh, inoperable vehicles. So in the uh, text of the uh, submittal, the application's submittal, uh, this is the text that they are proposing. Uh, you can see that it adds some additional flexibility. Uh, it still uh, indicates that storage of salvage and refuse is prohibited. Uh, storage of shipping or cargo containers or similar receptacles for storage is also prohibited unless stored in conjunction, in conjunction with the towing uh, business operated on the property. And uh, for the most part, we were comfortable with this text. However, uh, it, it could potentially lead to uh, permanent uh, extra storage of shipping or cargo containers, uh, based on the, how this would read. And that's not something that uh, we would uh, want to permit uh, in the city of Bloomington, uh, use of uh, cargo containers or shipping containers located on the ground that are essentially used as uh, where, small warehouses. Uh, you know, and the, and the background for that more recently is we had a lot of discussion related to the industrial uh, zoning standard updates. And uh, one thing we, we believe and we have the support of is that warehouse usage should be in a, a physical building and within a fully enclosed building. And the, uh, the use of permanent storage containers or shipping containers uh, really isn't uh, a level of investment uh, that we'd like to see in industrial districts. So what staff tried to do is try and uh, address the, the applicant's desire to store uh, inoperable vehicles. After all, they do operate a towing business. Uh, but then narrowly define what that inoperable vehicle storage would entail. Uh, so this is the text that uh, city staff is recommending uh, that the storage of salvage, shipping containers, uh, cargo containers or similar receptacles are prohibited. Uh, storage of inoperable vehicles or inoperable trailers is also prohibited unless incidentally and temporarily brought to the site due to towing operations for a period of 90 days or less. And so what we're trying to accomplish here is to add some flexibility to the applicant to have inoperable vehicles uh, stored on this site as part of a towing operation, um, which is currently prohibited. Uh, but then we also wanted to have considered consideration of a, a time limit. I, we believe that if you don't have at least some identification of a time limit, there's really no uh, mechanism to uh, to restrict uh, inoperable vehicles from being permanently stored, uh, which is something that uh, we think uh, would be a benefit to the city. Not in the last sentence, uh, again, trying to narrowly define uh, what can and can't happen on this site through the conditional use permit processes. Vehicles or trailers must not be repaired on site, must not be leaking fluids, uh, must not be dismantled or crushed, and it must not be sold on site. So as in essence, we, we understand that this site is appropriate for storage, uh, but not uh, for the use of it as a salvage yard. And related to uh, leaking fluids, for example, uh, that's, that's a type of operation that belongs within a building, uh, where building and fire codes can be met uh, to address those potential hazards. So with that, we are uh, recommending approval of the change of condition. Uh, I believe the applicant will want to speak uh, on the, the time uh, consideration. Um, but we are recommending approval as uh, with the staff's recommended change in condition. I'm happy to answer questions.
Thank you. Counsel, any questions of Mr. Centenario? Councilmember Nelson?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Um, I guess I'd just like to ask a question for clarification on the trailers. I think in the current um, conditions, they're not allowed trailers at all. And in the, in their proposed and in what uh, staff has proposed, they would be allowed operable trailers without restriction and inoperable ones with the restrictions. Am I understanding that correctly? And you help me understand the difference between an operable trailer and an inoperable trailer?
Sure. I, I think your understanding is, is correct, Councilmember. Um, and uh, it's essentially where the, the distinction is if uh, you know, a trailer can roll off the site of, it's probably operable. Uh, but if it has no wheels or is missing an axle, uh, probably not operable. Uh, so we're really, uh, we understand that as part of a towing operation, uh, they might have to tow large equipment and that might, and that equipment might, might need to be hauled on a semi-trailer, uh, which we feel is, uh, which is acceptable. Uh, but we feel that, that, that trailer should be able to, to come and go uh, in and out of the site. Um, but again, related to your question about the difference between the current condition text, uh, any inoperable vehicle uh, is prohibited on the site, uh, whereas we're trying to add some flexibility uh, per the applicant's request, uh, to allow some uh, to allow inoperable, inoperable vehicles for a towing operation.
All right. My next question re- was regarding the containers, that, that was something they had wanted for storage, or what was the purpose of those? And how would that be different than like a trailer that they use to tow multiple vehicles that, you know, they could leave them stored on?
Sure, uh, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember. The uh, so what the intent is with our texts related to cargo containers and shipping containers is that uh, if it's on a trailer, then it's part of a, an operable, operable trailer, uh, that comes and goes as part of their business operation. Whereas if it is a uh, shipping container that's just placed on the surface, uh, that's more, more likely going to be used just for, for storage generally. Uh, we feel that that storage, if it's, if it is in fact uh, permanent storage, that's really a warehouse use, uh, which must be conducted within uh, a physical building. Uh, so that's, you know, these distinctions can get kind of gray. Uh, but generally if, if a, a cargo container is on a trailer and it's being used regularly as part of the business operation, that would be acceptable.
Okay. So would I be understanding this correctly, that as long as it's being used, it can be moved, um, can go in and out, that's okay? And if it's inoperable, what you're proposing is a restriction on the time period that it also has to get moved out at some reasonable time period? And you've set that at 90 days?
Yes, Mayor, Councilmember Nelson, that's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Beloga?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, Councilmember Nelson just asked uh, my question and uh, Mike answered it. So thank you.
Very good. Counsel, other questions? If not, I believe uh, you said the, the applicant was available and Mr. Centenario wanted to speak, is that correct?
Mr. Mayor, I believe they did want to speak, yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Uh, Mike, their name is?
I, I believe uh, Mr. Griffith, one of the applicant's representative, uh, wished to speak tonight.
Griffith?
Yes.
Okay. Jerome, do we have a Mr. Griffith calling in to speak?
Yes, we have the lineup, Mr. Bill Griffith. Your line's now open.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Griffith. How are you this evening? Mr. Griffith, are you with us?
Uh, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Good evening. Welcome.
Thank you. Um, just a couple of points of clarification. Really going back, uh, the historical use of the property has always been for Chief's Towing. And Chief's Towing's been a Bloomington business for 50 years, uh, has a contract with the city, the city of Richfield, Hennepin County, the state of Minnesota. And so as part of its operations here and in other locations, they routinely uh, tow inoperable and operable vehicles. That's always been what's done um, in Bloomington and on these sites. And so back in 2014, the real focus was to get the site improved with the asphalt, the landscaping, the screening and the stormwater that you saw on the screen. And the site looks uh, looks greatly improved in its condition over 2014. Uh, one of the- One of the things we noted even back in 2014 that the condition, which was really designed to limit this from becoming a salvage yard, mistakenly covered inoperable vehicles when in fact he had been towing inoperable vehicles to that site in all of his use of the site. So Mr. Schoenborn decided to wait until he had all the improvements in and the site looks like it does today. And to come back and simply clarify that as part of his business operations, he is in fact towing inoperable vehicles to the site. Because when you're in a wreck, oftentimes, if you're towed, the vehicle's not drivable. And that includes semi-trailers, that includes passenger vehicles, all range of vehicles that are towed from the interstate and other locations. So what we were attempting to do was simply clarify the long-term use of the property and not necessarily gain additional flexibility for use of the property, but simply clarify what has been going on historically since he's owned the property. Staff came up with a condition that, of course, we believe is more restrictive than the condition we proposed and had discussed with staff prior to the application. That's fine to a point. Where it doesn't work are in two points that I want to make. One is oftentimes there are holes on these vehicles, and those holes can last six months to 12 months. And so he can't move the vehicles. And so 90 days just doesn't work with the business model and what's been going on for many years on the property. And the second is occasionally minor repairs such as replacing tires and taillights are necessary so that you can actually move vehicles off the site. And so both of those parts of the new condition that staff has come up with don't work in terms of the business operation. And so I want to point that out because if the council were to adopt the condition as written, we would have to withdraw the application immediately because it doesn't work with the business model. I think if we can address the six to 12 months as a reasonable timeframe and minor repairs necessary to relate to the business, I think we've got something that's workable. But this all, I just want to be clear, this is all was on my client's desire to clarify what he's been doing for the long term on this property. This is nothing new. I don't necessarily think that it creates additional flexibility. It creates additional clarity as to what they've been doing for a long time. So with that, I'll just stand for any questions. But I want to be clear that if the motion is to adopt the condition as written, we would prefer to withdraw the application. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Griffith. Questions, counsel? I do have a question, Mr. Griffith. On the, you mentioned the holds on the vehicle, are those, describe those. Are those legal holds? Are they part of a, is it part of litigation of some kind? Or what kind of holds would cause the operator to not be able to move it for six to 12 months?
Sure, it could be a police or other government hold in conjunction with an investigation. Sometimes the Internal Revenue Service, sometimes law enforcement. So there can be any number of reasons for a hold, and Mr. Schoenborn cannot move the vehicles.
So I mean, personally, I mean, that makes sense. If there could be proof of a hold on a, you know, keeping it in place for this long, for whatever reason, I could see that. Are there instances where for any other reason that vehicles would be there for six to 12 months?
That's the main reason. But again, there's no time limit on the current condition. So, you know, to agree to a time limit of 90 days, it isn't workable. So again, we'd prefer to start over if we had to, than accept the condition that we're already not complying with.
Understood. And then the second question, and again, I agree it makes sense for minor repairs to be able to get vehicles, to make inoperable vehicles operable and get them off the lot. I could see, I mean, that would make sense. That currently takes place on the site? And I mean, is there special equipment, a special building? Is there a place where it is done now? Or is it just done ad hoc, just to get the vehicles off the lot?
It isn't done often. It's done when a tire needs to go on a vehicle or a taillight needs to go on a vehicle. We're talking really minor repairs, the kind of repairs that you might do in your driveway.
Got it, sure. That makes sense. Counsel, additional questions? Councilmember Nelson?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd just like to say that the hold for a legal reason, in my mind, makes sense. The changing of a tire makes sense. I don't know if I'm capable of rewriting this as we sit here. And so I just have a question about process. If we approve this, Mr. Griffith indicated they withdraw it, which I assume would then restart an entire process and potentially have to go through planning again. Is there a way that we could maybe table this for further discussion and just bring it back at our next meeting or a future meeting? Would that be an easier process to get what, I guess in my mind, seem like reasonable things? I would also, wouldn't mind hearing from Mike if he's got a different viewpoint on these matters or some different information to provide us on these items.
Mr. Centenario, anything to add here?
Sure. Excuse me, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers. Yeah, you know, we're willing and able to modify the condition language. We do feel that there has to be a time consideration. So temporary storage doesn't become permanent storage. And if it is permanent storage of inoperable vehicles, you know, it's unclear where the line is drawn between a towing operation and a salvage yard. So we do feel that there, a time of consideration is important and think that we could craft language to address that. I think in terms of process, what we could do is connect with the applicant. And then if they're amenable to a crafted application, we could even bring it back as part of a consent agenda item for your next meeting.
I'll tell you what, how about if I suggest this? This is a public hearing, so how about if we open the public hearing and see if there's anybody on the line who wants to speak to this? And with the public hearing open, how about if we continue this with the goal of trying to work out between staff and the applicant some workable language on those two points that we were discussing here? To Councilmember Nelson's point, I don't want to try and write this as we sit here, but I think if there was time to discuss it between staff and the applicant, I think we could come to a compromise here. Does that make sense? I'm not seeing anybody shake their head no. So what I would like to do then, on item 8.5, I would like to open the public hearing. This is a public hearing on item 8.5 to change the conditional use permit conditions of approval for 9604 and 9608 Humboldt Avenue South. Ms. Wilson?
Jerome, do we have any other callers wishing to speak on Agenda Item 8.5?
Yes, and anybody wants to speak for Agenda 8.5, please press star one. And we have the lineup, Mr. Tim Hanneman. Your line's now open.
Good evening, are you there?
Hello, I'm Tim Hanneman. I would actually like to speak about Agenda Item 8.7, rank choice voting.
Ah, we-
I don't know how we found my name in the pile.
That's interesting to me as well. I will tell you, Mr. Hanneman, we had that as a timed item. Just as a quick commercial here, we had that as a timed item, and we did address that actually fairly close to the start of our meeting. And so that was actually, we had that under item five, I believe, which was, it was a timed item, so we did it shortly after our COVID-19 update and already had the discussion and took the vote on that.
Great, well, thank you so much for considering it. I will jump off the call, and I have no comment to make about this towing situation.
Okay, very good. Thanks for your patience. Sorry about the confusion.
Thank you.
Jerome, do we have any other callers wishing to speak to the council on Agenda Item 8.5?
There are no more who wants to speak for Agenda 8.5. You may continue.
Thank you.
All right, so we don't have, we have the public hearing open, and we've got a consideration here about tabling this. Mr. Verbrugge, can you help us out here?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. I did want to advise the council that the 60-day period for this application expires on August 15. We only have one council meeting between tonight and the 15th. That's next Monday, August 3. I would recommend that we get confirmation on the record from the applicant to extend the 60-day to 120-day deadline, just in case we can't get language in the next couple of days to bring back for council.
That sounds reasonable to me. Mr. Griffith? Mr. Griffith, are you still with us?
Jerome, can you pass Mr. Griffith through?
Yeah, his line is still open.
Okay. Mr. Griffith, I don't know if you heard Mr. Verbrugge's suggestion that we have one meeting, we're pushing up against the time limit on this, and we have one meeting that would fit in there. In the event that we're not able to hammer this out, could we get a verbal agreement to extend this to 120 days from the 60-day currently and give ourselves a little bit of breathing room?
Sure, Mr. Mayor, that sounds reasonable. Thank you.
All right, so we have an agreement to extend the 60-day deadline to 120 days. We've got the public hearing open, and I guess I would look for a motion to table this until a date uncertain, to give staff and the applicant a chance to work through this. Mr. Verbrugge?
Hey, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, let's try to put a date on it since we're leaving the public hearing open. So if there is somebody else who does wish to offer testimony, and I would recommend August 24th, that gives us a good goal.
August 24th, that sounds good. So to table this until the August 24th meeting. With that, I'd look for a motion on that, and we can move forward on this.
So moved.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Sorry, I'm sorry, I'm not available on the 24th. So a meeting before or after that would be fine, but I'm sorry, I'm not available that evening.
We can be flexible?
I believe our next regularly scheduled city council meeting is September 14th, Mr. Mayor.
After that, September 14th, how does that look on your calendar, Mr. Griffith?
Thank you, Mayor, that'll work fine.
Very good. Let's table this until September 14th? With all the conditions that I had laid out, do we have a motion? I think I heard Councilmember Nelson with a motion earlier.
Yeah, so moved, moved to table it until September 14th.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
A second, Martin?
We have a motion by Councilmember Nelson and a second by Councilmember Martin to table this with the public hearing still open and the direction to staff and the applicant to get, put their heads together and try and figure this out, taking this up again on September 14th. Hearing no further discussion? Ms. Christensen?
Thank you. Beloga?
Aye.
Mayor Bussi?
Aye.
Carter? Coulter?
Aye.
Lowman?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero. All right, well, thank you very much, and we will be back at this in September on this one.
Thank you.
Thank you. We can move next to item 8.6, which is a public hearing, our final public hearing of the evening. This is the ordinance amending Chapter 12 to require face coverings in indoor spaces of public accommodation. As I mentioned at the start of the meeting, this is a somewhat moot point in the fact that the governor declared a statewide mandate on face coverings. What I would like to do is open the public hearing and see if there's anybody who would like to talk about this. And then at some point, as we get through our, any public comment, to leave the public hearing open and then table this indefinitely because just in the event that we may need to come back to it sometime in the future, working on the pandemic's timeline, not on our own. So we'll see where we, the future leads us. But I would like to move forward with a public hearing on this. Do we have staff presentation at all on this, Mr. Verbrugge? Or are we just moving into a public hearing on this?
Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, Rayne O'Brien from our legal department is available if you do have questions. But since the governor's executive order has, I think, preempted this a little bit, that unless you specifically request it, I think it's okay to go to the public hearing.
Very good. Counsel, any specific questions? If not, we'll go to the public hearing on this and see if there's anybody looking to comment. Seeing none, I would like to open item 8.6, the public hearing regarding the ordinance amending Chapter 12 to require face coverings in indoor spaces in public accommodation. Ms. Wilson?
Jerome, do we have any callers wishing to speak to the council on Agenda Item 8.6? Whoops, just a moment, I think Jerome is muted. I'm sorry, Jerome, I had you muted. Jerome, do we have any callers for Agenda Item 8.6?
And again, anybody who wishes to speak for Agenda 8.6, please press star one. There are no one who wants to speak for Agenda 8.6. You may continue.
Very good. Thank you very much. So we have this public hearing, and as I said, I'd like to leave it open, and I would like to table this indefinitely, just on the chance, the off chance, the possibility that it may come in, it may be useful or come into play again in the future. So counsel, if there's any discussion, I'm happy to hear it. Otherwise, I'd look for a motion to table item 8.6 indefinitely.
Mayor, I'd be happy to move that motion with one exception. I changed the word table to postpone.
Always the parliamentarian, we appreciate that. Councilmember Lowman, we will postpone this indefinitely. Very good.
Mayor?
Ms. Manderscheid?
I happen to have the rules open here on page 10 of our Rules of Procedure. With regard to a motion to table or postpone, that's grouped into one section under Section C. And that says that any council member may make a motion to require that the consideration of the main motion be delayed until a certain stated time for, among other reasons, obtaining more information. Future date must, a future date certain must be set when the subject is considered. A motion is debatable, requires a majority vote. I know that isn't, or I believe Councilmember Lowman has indicated that that isn't the way Roberts has set it up, but that's how our rules have modified it. The next section, Section D, on that same page 10, talks about a motion to table indefinitely. And that is when the council wants to make a motion to postpone the consideration of a main motion under consideration that will be taken up at an unspecified later date when it is placed on the agenda. A majority of the council members present can vote on it to call it back from the table, and the motion is indebatable, requires a majority vote.
So what I just heard you say is that we are officially, we aren't going to postpone, we do need to table indefinitely according to our Rules of Procedure, is that correct?
Correct, Mayor. And that, just as an aside, is one of the things that we're planning to make more consistent with Roberts at a future study session. But yes, that is a bit of a nuance in our Rules of Procedure.
Thank you.
That's bizarre, because I, you know, when you do this, Robert, because the next thing I'd tell you is, we've talked about this, you can't close a meeting with something laying on the table. And we don't have anything in our Rules of Order to talk about that. So I mean, I get how we're classifying this. So I will, I will change my motion back to tabling it indefinitely, which is totally wrong, but that's fine.
We have a totally wrong motion by Councilmember Lowman, do we have a second?
Well, Mayor, let me just back up for the record and just clarify that just the most important thing is that we all understand what we're doing. And what I hear you all saying is that, given the governor's intervening executive order that came out after we published the public hearing notice, we went ahead and put together this ordinance, again, in advance of the governor's order coming out, because we didn't know what it was going to say. And we're here tonight, this public hearing was noticed, so you opened the public hearing as stated in the public hearing notice. You've had a little initial discussion about it, both at the beginning of the meeting and right now. And now what I hear you saying is, because the governor's executive order is in place and because we originally, earlier talked about how the science is always changing, we don't know what the future holds, et cetera, et cetera, you want to open, sort of open, table this, lay it out there, and sort of press pause on it. And then if at some point in the future you want to bring it back to life and resuscitate it, we will most certainly re, if it's again an ordinance, we will most certainly, and if time allows, republish a notice, get it out, let the city and its residents know about a reconsideration of this ordinance, either in this current format or in some other format. Is that accurate, Mayor and members?
I believe that it's almost exactly what I said. I think that's exactly right.
All right, so we're all on the same page, just to be crystal clear.
Yes.
And that's what I'm moving, Mayor.
We have that motion by Councilmember Loman. Do we have a second?
Second, Beloga.
We have a motion by Loman and a second by Councilmember Beloga to follow the motion as stated by Councilmember Loman and City Attorney Manderscheid. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Christensen.
Thank you. Beloga?
Aye.
Mayor Bussie?
Aye.
Carter?
Aye.
Coulter?
Aye.
Loman?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero. Thank you all very much and we'll, uh, obviously come back to that if need be sometime in the future. We can move to item nine, our organizational business, and item 9.1, which is a review of the 2020 and 2021 budget to get an update from Ms. Carlson, our budget manager. Good evening and welcome.
Thank you. So, uh, good evening, Mayor and council members. I am here this evening to give a budget update. It has been a few weeks since I presented at a council meeting. Um, in that time, I've been working closely with the Community Budget Advisory Committee and spending, uh, my Wednesday evenings there in the council chambers with the committee as they work through their deliverables for the 2021 budget for the council. So the committee's sixth meeting was last week and we have been providing updates on their work in the council's, uh, one weekly communications, um, about their progress. And then next week on August 3rd at the council meeting, Co-Chair Steve Peterson will be giving a, uh, the update for the committee to the council about, uh, what they've been working on and their progress and also giving some details about their community engagement plan, um, that they've been working on in conjunction with our Community Outreach Engagement Division. So tonight I will, um, just give some information, some updated revenue and expenditure projections for 2020, uh, five-year forecast for lodging and admission tax revenues, impacts of different property tax percentage changes that the committee is looking at proposing to the council or will be looking at, and the impacts of the, those on the median value home. And then also talking about when, when the city council will be discussing budget. So looking at a budget calendar for the council for this year. So, um, starting off, this is what was just published in the, the most recent monthly financial report by the Finance Department. So for the July financial report, these are the projections for the general fund revenues. And so you can see there at the bottom that the shortfall that we were projecting was 14.4 million. And that included a 6.9 million property tax delinquency that we've been projecting, um, kind of as a worst-case scenario. Five million shortfall for lodging tax and a million dollars, almost a million dollars in admission tax, as well as some reductions in revenues for fines and business licenses and program income. And so this was in the, uh, presentation that I prepared for tonight. But then I have another slide that was not in the presentation. I can get forward here. There you go. Um, this is updated as of today. So we received some updated information from Hennepin County this morning. And the first half property tax collections are in. And if you recall, the May 15th deadline for property taxes was extended for some property tax owners until July 15th. So we have some updated information and based on that information, we are hopefully projecting a, instead of a 6.9 million property tax delinquency, a 5.3 million property tax delinquency. That would mean that if it's the same rate of delinquency as the first half of the year, as the second half of the year. So that, um, remains to be seen, but this is just showing if we're projecting out the same rate of property tax delinquency that we've experienced so far, instead of a, um, this previous slide here in this 14.4 million, it's 1.6 million better. Still not great, but it's, you know, it's still a 12.8 million shortfall, but it's better than what we were just initially projecting. And we will just continue to, um, update these projections as we know more information as we get through the year. Uh, this next slide is the expenditures. And so compared to budget, it's projecting to be in the general fund about 2.6 million under the amended budget. And so this is another slide that I added just to explain, um, if we're looking at that 12.8 million dollar revenue shortfall, how we would address that is from, you know, the revenue shortfall. So as I, uh, just showed on the previous slide here, that 2.5 million, um, under budget, that, that's going to take care of part of it. And then, if you recall, the general fund, fund balance policy is to have between 35 and 40% of the next year's, um, revenues is in a reserve since we, in the fund balance of the general fund, since we only receive our property taxes twice a year. And, um, we had been able to keep that fund balance reserve at 40%. And, but we now bringing it down to 35%, then we can use, uh, 5.1 million, or almost 5.2 million of reserves. And then we had also discussed, um, earlier this year about using the four, four and a half million that we have in the facilities fund to fund a, um, when we need to replace the pool vessel. Um, and then it's when it comes time to replace the pool vessel, that we would issue debt for that replacement instead of the cash that we've been accumulating. And then, um, also talked about using a portion of the reserve in the compensated absences fund that pays out, pay time off, um, vacation and personal leave. So this, uh, was in the, um, presentation that I'd prepared. And this is looking, um, with this new, these new numbers from, um, Hennepin County with our property tax delinquencies. This is just showing it from a working capital perspective, just another way of looking at where we're projecting to land at the end of the year for the general fund. So, um, with the 5.3 million property tax delinquency and the other projections we have for revenue and expenditures for 2020, if we have, then we're looking at being at, um, 24 million 595,000 at the end of the year in that working capital balance compared to our goal of, uh, 29.6 million, we're going to have a shortfall. And so if you think of it that way, we would have to transfer money then from the facilities fund and from the compensated absences fund to cover that. And this next slide is back where we are looking at a 6.9 million. So this is kind of our worst-case property tax delinquency situation. That was showing a 6.6 million, um, shortfall for the working capital goal. And in that case, this is what we were talking about a few weeks ago, um, was to actually use up to 1.2 million of the compensated absences fund and then also 1 million from strategic priorities. Next slide is, um, somewhat, um, these are some projections that we had shared with the Community Budget Advisory Committee. And, um, this is a few weeks ago, we were just looking at, um, 2020 through 2024. And basically weekly, there is a team of, um, employees that are looking at industry, um, reports and doing a lot of analysis. And this is what we're, and it, and this also changes weekly. Um, so we were looking at this forecast here. It's comparing the, what's, we're, we're projecting for 2020 through 2024. Um, and then taking that as a difference of what we actually collected in 2019. So you can see it, it takes about five years until we're thinking that it will come back to those pre COVID levels for lodging tax to be where we were in, uh, last year. And then we did this, we have the same thing here, um, for admission tax. So, um, you can see it's, we're also thinking it's going to be about five years before we come back to those pre-COVID, um, numbers. Uh, next slide, this is showing, uh, the median value home monthly property tax cost for the city's portion of the property tax. The first, um, row there is the, the 2020, like right now, um, what the monthly cost is for paying property taxes this year. So for the median value home, that is $89.73 per month. And, um, if you recall, for the 2020, um, tax levy, that was a 4.75% um, increase from the 2019 tax levy. And so then, um, for 2021, uh, potential tax levy, um, changes from the 2020 tax levy. So if it's 0%, if the total tax levy is not increased at all, it's actually due to the, um, how the property valuations are for the median value home in comparison to, um, other, um, property within the entire, um, that the tax levy is based on. It would actually, uh, go down slightly, so $1.21 per month. And if the, the tax levy is increased by 1%, it'll go down very slightly, uh, .20, you know, 26 cents a month. And then you can see if it's a 2% increase, um, a 3% increase, 4% increase, how, um, how that changes. So, um, that's, we have on this slide, we've also been sharing this information, obviously, with the Community Budget Advisory Committee as well, as they're looking through things and working to make recommendations for the council to set a preliminary tax levy. And then just taking those percentages, just to kind of equate that to dollars. So 1% change is a roughly almost $650,000. So 1%, about 650,000, uh, 2% is almost 1.3 million and so on. And so if, I just wanted to say, if we did not, um, if we don't adjust the expenditures and reduce expenditures, service level, levels, or find other ways to reduce the tax levy support that we're, um, looking at needing to make up for our projected, um, declines in non-property tax revenue, it would be around a 10% tax levy. So it'd be around between 6 and 7 million dollars, which is why that you, uh, formed, created the Community Budget Advisory Committee to look through what, um, potentials, uh, you know, service level reductions and other things to look at with the, um, with the input from the community. Um, and lastly, I have the, I just want to share with you the plan for the rest of this year with city council, with our calendar. Like I said before, the co-chair, Steve Peterson from the committee is going to be, um, with you next, next week, giving, um, an update on their progress and their plan. And then the plan is for the Monday, August 31st, city council study session, for them to present, um, a proposal for preliminary tax levy and to discuss that with the council. And then, um, and then on September 14th would be a regular business meeting where, um, that would be, the, the council would approve a preliminary tax levy. If necessary, we could potentially schedule an additional council meeting if we're not ready to do that yet. Also at that, on September 28th, um, that's not on the calendar right now, um, but depends if that's necessary. And then at that time could possibly have another update from the committee. Then October 5th, um, that, if that, if we don't have one September 28th, and that would be the date that you would have a, an update from the committee, the plans for them to update you monthly, along with, you know, continuing to have that, um, information in the one weeklies. And then, um, I'll be there at the October 12th study session to, to bring the non-property tax special revenue budgets. That's not something that the committee is looking at. Um, and then those could be potentially approved by the council on the 19th. And then, um, what we're, they're working towards is, uh, Monday, November 9th, is, um, to have the three to four, uh, budget scenario options for the council. So the committee will be presenting that. And then, um, and then on the 16th, um, I would be bringing at the study session, enterprise fund budgets, um, that do, that do not have property tax support, like utility funds and some of the other enterprise funds. Um, we're planning to have the public hearing for utility rates and those utility fund budgets November 23rd. And then, um, December 7th would be, uh, that's the public hearing. That's the Truth and Taxation Public Hearing, um, discussion of budgets. And then, um, and then, but Monday, December 21st would be the, the time to approve the final tax levy and remaining budget. And that is what I have, uh, this evening. Is there any questions?
Thank you much. Counsel, do we have any questions? Councilmember Loman?
Oh, thank you, Mayor. And, uh, uh, Ms. Carlson, uh, a question for you about the, um, you had put together some, uh, slides there that you had added for projections for both, uh, uh, the admission tax revenue and also the lodging and tax, uh, piece. And I wanted, I, I know these are based on forecasts and I know they're shifting back and forth, but the numbers that we're looking at today, um, from a forecasting standpoint, are we using conservative estimates? Are we using somewhere in between? You know what? Help me to understand how I should be, uh, you know, reading this, this, uh, this forecast.
Yes, thank you, um, Mayor and Councilmember Loman. Um, we are, um, comparing our forecast to the industry standards and ours with the industry, like different, um, experts are also projecting. And ours are, um, kind of in line with theirs, but more conservative and also based more on our local information. Um, but I would say it's, it's not the best-case scenario and it's probably closer to what we actually think it's going to be, uh, with slightly more conservative.
That's very helpful, uh, because I, you, because sometimes you say, well, it's changing from, from, you know, week to week. That makes me go, wow, that's scary, but it helps to understand, you know, here's kind of what you guys are thinking, uh, based on the best available information and kind of following our, our tradition, uh, that we've had, uh, a, a slightly more conservative, uh, perspective on it. So I appreciate, uh, giving that additional, uh, information. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'll just ask that, Mayor and council members, that, um, the, the number that's really changing a lot is the 2020 number because we're getting act, we get those returns in monthly. So as we get in those actual numbers, we know what we're getting for sure. And then, you know, by the end of the year, then we'll know exactly what it was.
Councilmember Coulter?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, just, uh, request, Kari, if you could. Um, you had the, the numbers of what the, what various levy impacts would be on the median value household. And, um, in the past, I know, um, that you, yeah, that's the one, um, that you have sort of prepared. Usually I think it's when we've actually adopted a final levy, um, but you prepared, um, uh, similar numbers for what that looks like for various houses in, in different, kind of different neighborhoods across the city. Um, this is, I don't know if other council members would find this valuable, but, um, if you'd be able to do something like that, even just with these, you know, simple flat 1, 2, 3, and 4% increases, um, I think that would really help me not only sort of conceptualize the numbers, but also be able to, to talk to folks about it because I think, you know, you, you say, well, the median, this is the impact on the median value home. Well, if you don't live in the median value home, I think it's hard, it's hard for a lot of folks to get what that really means. So if we, uh, if I could get, I mean, even just in an email or something, just kind of, you know, this is what, this kind of home would look like and, and that kind of thing. I think it would, it would be helpful for me as well.
I, yes, Mayor and Councilmember Coulter, I will work with the assessing department. We can put that information together.
Thank you.
Agreed, Councilmember Coulter. I think that would be helpful. Councilmember Beloga?
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, carry on the revenue, uh, slide that you presented. Business licenses were down by slightly over half a million dollars. Is that attributable to the reduction in liquor license fees that we charged?
Ms. Carlson?
I, um, Mayor and Councilmember Beloga, I can look into that. Um, I know that and possibly Assistant City Manager Chris Wilson can speak to this as well. But when we received a lot of our, we had a lot of liquor licenses that recently applied and majority of them did renew. But I, we can look into it more about why, why it's coming through trendings that we're going to be ending the year at 513,000 less in budget.
Uh, thank you. And a follow-up question is, is I recall that the reduction, the credit, if you would, that we were giving to liquor license owners in their 2020, 21 renewal that really pertained to the time of the shutdown. We were going to be reimbursed by the state COVID elation. And so if you could follow up on that also, that would be a feature.
I guess, Mayor and Councilmember Baloga, we can do that.
Mr. Verbrugge, anything to add to that?
Thank you, Mayor and Councilmember Baloga, councilmembers. Kari's right, we will follow up on that, what we'll do with that specific question for one weekly this Friday is provide an update on the expenses that we are counting against our CARES allocation and make sure that the reduction in license revenue is offset there. The other little tidbit about the CARES allocation I wanted to share with councilmembers is that my understanding of what may be in the the Senate Republican Proposal for the next round of assistance allows for local governments to utilize the earlier allocation, the March allocation for revenue loss, which is new. That's because the, the Republican proposal, as I understand it, does not wish to provide a new allocation to state and local government. However, they apparently wish to provide a little more flexibility with the previous allocation. What that means for us is that we currently have about $2 million of the 6.7% that we've received that is thus far unallocated. And we've identified several other potential expenses, including potential future rental assistance needs or additional public health costs and maybe some public safety costs or even the Small Business Emergency Loan Assistance Program as future eligible expenses. So we make sure that we aren't giving back some of that money if we have community need. What I have done in light of the news of what may come in the federal bill is direct staff to hold off on assigning any of those future potential eligible expenses until we get the outcome of that. So we know if we have $2 million remaining that could help us with the offsetting of revenue. So we will, we will provide all of that again is in the one weekly at the end of this week. So you can see it on paper. And I guess I'd also ask Councilmember Coulter, if you want the information, if we can turn it around this week from assessing in the one weekly as well, or if you'd like that at a subsequent also budget discussion.
One weekly is fine.
Thank you. Helpful information there. Thank you much. Counsel, additional questions? I have one, Ms. Carlson, if you could. So under permits, it looks like permits are, the, the, the original and the amended, the projected are, are static. They're staying the same. I, am I correct to assume that that means that building permits, business licensing, that, that kind of thing is, building permits in particular are still strong in the city of Bloomington? Is that correct?
Uh, yes, Mayor. Currently, it does look as if we will be on budget for permit revenue. That still, we can put some more information in the one weekly detailing that out. Just, I know we shared some information at the Community Budget Advisory Committee and we can share that same information with the council in the one weekly. I, the thing that pops in my head, and this isn't what's driving this, but I remember that swimming pool permits were up 200% for backyard swimming pools. But, but overall, I don't know, Jamie, if you have some more to add, but we can put that information in the one weekly.
Yeah, that, that would be helpful. Mr. Verbrugge, anything to add?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor and Kari. The, the, the permit revenue on the building side is remaining strong because of the strength in our multifamily residential development that's been occurring right now. And so we expect that this number will hold for the rest of the year. There's a little bit of trepidation looking forward to next year and how we, how we budget for building permit activity, just not knowing what the consequences of the economy are going to be. Right now, though, it doesn't seem to be slowing down, especially in the multifamily sector.
Good to know. Thank you. Counsel, additional questions, comments? Mr. Verbrugge, anything here to add?
Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, I actually have two points that I would appreciate a little bit of discussion by council. I don't need you to spend a whole lot of time on it, but to at least plant the seed for a couple of our subsequent conversations. Thinking ahead to next Monday's appearance by the Seaback Co-Chair, Steve Peterson, when he provides his monthly report to the City Council. The members of the committee are interested in knowing from the council what that top level of comfort is for them to discuss possibilities for the tax levy for 2021. So let me be more straightforward about this. The, the numbers that we're working with right now for 2021 and some of the consensus items for the committee already, which are subject to the council's approval, put our gap for the 2021 budget at an amount that would be about an 8% tax levy increase if we were to hold pat. And I think the committee understands and staff understands that 8% is probably not an acceptable number, even though the percentage change is going to be less than that. And we'll actually provide that number. That was a deliverable for the committee as well. So we're going to model out what that, that stand pat number is. But the, the committee is interested in knowing sort of what that top end is for council. So I think that it doesn't have to be a discussion point or, or a consensus item this evening. But when Co-Chair Peterson comes in next Monday, that maybe council may be prepared to have some conversation along those lines. The other item related to the Budget Advisory Committee has to do with any direction from the council regarding items that you would like to see considered in their budget discussions. Specifically, are there issues related to the strategic priorities of the City Council that you want to make sure are factored in as, as the committee is looking ahead? So as an example, over the last couple of months, a couple of councilmembers have inquired about resources for work in the area of equity and inclusion. Earlier this year, admittedly pre-pandemic, there was discussion by councilmembers about a similar question in terms of the resources for our work in the area of sustainability. So it would be helpful to provide some feedback to the co-chair next week. And if, you know, in the conversation, there seems to be some indication from council that there are areas you would like the committee to have conversation about so that they're aware of that when they're working their way through some of these options. And certainly would welcome any conversation if councilmembers would like to share some thoughts or ask some questions this evening, but wanted to more set that up as a conversation coming forward.
Thoughts or questions? Councilmember Coulter?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And just, just generally, I guess, to the city manager's first question, I, and this is, this is returning to a theme that I've raised before, but I would have a little bit of difficulty sort of conceptualizing what that upper limit might be without knowing what, at least in general terms and sort of orders of magnitude, what that budget impact would look like. You know, the city manager just mentioned, for example, that to sort of keep, keep things at the, 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 people power and the level of service that, that we have now would roughly call for an 8% levy increase. And I agree, no one's suggesting that. But so what we would essentially be saying then is even a 4% or 5% levy increase would be a cut in some fashion. And so I guess I'm, I would just have a little, I would have some difficulty articulating what I feel would be an appropriate upper limit without knowing what those impacts would be, at least in some kind of general sense. You know, what does that mean in terms of staff layoffs? And, and what are the types of things that, that might have to change in certain, in terms of the services that we provide and that kind of thing? So I think I would need a little more information before I could really articulate that well. Because I, you know, I, I want us to be careful about not sort of arbitrarily picking a number because it sounds good, but, but making sure that, that we reflect what I've always said, you know, that, that budget decisions are policy decisions.
Mr. Verbrugge and councilmembers, Councilmember Coulter, appreciate that request. And we can also include that as part of our additional information later this week. The, it's, it's actually a pretty easy number for us to generate. I'm not going to do back of the math, or back of the envelope math right now, but the two slides that Kari had, this one and the subsequent one, Kari, where you see the revenue generated by levy increase. So a 4% increase generates an additional $2.5 million. And the, the gap at 8% is, I think, in the neighborhood of about 4.5 to 5 million dollars. So in that range, you're talking about a 2 to 2.5 million dollar reduction or, you know, whatever the options are that the, the committee might recommend in terms of how that gap would then get resolved. We will take each of these numbers to your question and we will, we will show that math.
Thank you. Councilmember Baloga. Councilmember Baloga, I think you're still unmuted.
Sorry. Thank you. A couple of points in addition to that, which was already mentioned by Councilmember Coulter, are just some raw expense increase and decrease information. Where, what would be the impacts of those service items? And then I still don't quite understand how we are forecasting into 2021 receipt of delinquent property taxes from year 2020.
Mr. Verbrugge, can you explain that?
It doesn't need to be explained now, but, you know, that's a reasonably significant number. It's from 4 to 6 million dollars. And, you know, so if it's not a 2021 impact, when is it? That type of thing, what's the assumptions going forward?
Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, Councilmember Baloga, it's an excellent question. And it's a little bit of an unknowable right now just because of the uncertainty about when the delinquent tax would actually be received. I think the expectation is we would receive most of that in 2021. I'm reluctant to say that with a lot of confidence right now just because of the uncertainty, especially in the commercial real estate markets and the impact that the economy may have on significant taxpayers and the fact that, you know, the disposition of some of those properties and the taxes associated may linger beyond 2021. We will certainly show that math. I am, I am, I'm, I'm more confident that the later we get into the year, the math will be better.
I, I appreciate the difficulty and thank you for the response. So if we could also do a couple scenarios then, 50% of the shortfall being collected in 2021, then what needs to be picked up in levy and so on? That, I would find that critically important to my calculus in addition to answering the levy increase answer that we talked about earlier.
I appreciate that, Councilmember Baloga, and want to assure the councilmembers that the committee is having this conversation as well. The co-chairs have been pretty consistent identifying that in each year, 2021 and 2022, there are likely to be some scenarios where we have one-time money that presents itself. And so trying to figure out how do we incorporate that into our scenarios is going to be a, an important policy discussion. Because as the council is aware, Councilmember Baloga, you know, we've talked about it. The, the issue is not just for 2021, as we're looking ahead to 22 and 23 as well. So navigating some of those one-time issues over the course of a couple of years is going to be high on the conversationalist for both the committee and for the council.
Thanks, Jamie.
Councilmember Loman.
Thanks, Mayor. And in terms of strategic priorities and how we have a look at those, the one that comes to my mind first, it certainly is a triangle of ones that I want to, want to have us review. But when we look at this high-quality service delivery, I think it makes some sense to, you know, look at that particular priority and try to figure out if, you know, what does that, does that mean at its highest level, medium level and low level? And just, you know, just looking at that from our strategic priority standpoint and just looking what that impact means in terms of what types of things we want to move forward. I'm not suggesting at all that we, we move away from our high-quality service delivery, but, you know, what does that impact? You know, if we try to, if we end up still providing a service and degrading that service. And then the other two ones that I would bring forward that I think are important and that from an opportunity and risk factor is around sustainability and also around diversity and inclusion. I think as we look out decades from now, I think some of the things that we need to do now, we need to position ourselves around those two particular priorities to be sure that we don't create unintended consequences that would impact our budget in a long-term perspective. And then with the changing marketplace, I think we also need to consider our focused renewal piece, that we cannot lose sight of that because that also has some implications from our, our tax impacts of making sure that we are making some transitions with some of our, our properties that are out there that are, let's face it, from a retail standpoint, may not be viable going forward. And then to your first question, I think the thing that I'm most concerned about when I look at the tax levy, I think Councilmember Coulter has, has put it well in terms of the, you know, we need to look at as a value decision. But the thing that I want to look at is in terms of the impact to our taxpayers. And so if we do look to go all the way up to that 8, 8%, just to look what that looks like, to hold it steady or drive it all the way under zero to, to affect that, what does that look like for our residents? What I'm particularly interested in, certainly we, we look at it from the median standpoint, but I'm interested in those particular properties that are high-valued and what the swing would be for those that are above that median. What, what, how will they be impacted by some of these changes? If we go above zero, if we were to go to eight, if we go to four? And hopefully that makes sense to you. If not, I'm certainly happy to take that offline and have a, have a little more detailed conversation about that. And then I'm also interested in terms of what are the other risks that are out there in terms of like fire pension that could drive things if we have to utilize that in one-time monies that we've already talked about. Thanks.
Thank you. Counsel, other thoughts or suggestions or ideas? So you've got your homework then. In preparation of Chair Peterson coming back next week, you've got your homework. You know, what is the top level of comfort of the, the tax levy for 2021? twenty twenty one and what items should we consider um for example from the strategic priorities standpoint so.
And Mr. Mayor and council members if I might just one last note uh I know the council is aware but for the folks at home who may be watching and uh taking interest in city budget uh the amount of information that we have provided to the budget advisory committee is um significant and we have all of that available on our website if you go to the community budget advisory committee page on our website uh you will see every PowerPoint presentation that's provided them all of the financial documents uh that they need to do their work and uh all the analysis and response to questions that staff has been providing so uh it may be even be a little bit of information overload even for the council who's used to seeing a lot of numbers and a lot of detail uh but I recognize that this is a little bit of a a a change in course for how we've done this process in the past and I certainly don't want to leave the council behind in that conversation so uh in those um quiet moments where you're trying to figure out if you want to watch another episode of Parks and Recreation or uh in binge another show on Netflix or you want to get into the budget the numbers are sitting there waiting for you so.
Tempting offer tempting offer I I will add that uh the discussions of the community budget advisory committee have been fantastic they've asked some really good questions uh there's some very thoughtful and um in-depth discussion that's going on among the council members and I think they're all doing an outstanding job and I I hope staff feels the same way because I've been very impressed with uh just watching them and watching them interact and how they've tackled this uh this issue I think they're doing an outstanding job. With that let's move on to item nine point two our city council policy and issue update. Mr. Reverie.
Uh Mr. Mayor and council members I don't have legislative agendas a specific item on your agenda this evening or legislative update I think as council is aware the special session ended last week there was only one significant uh item that was moved through that was the police reform bill and uh staff provided some additional information on that uh there was no movement on the tax or bonding bill the information uh looking ahead to August twelfth which is the next time we expect the legislature to be in special session uh coinciding with the time when Governor Walz will be considering whether to extend his uh emergency declaration uh does not uh right now sound as if there's uh uh much that's going to be on the table if the public comments of the leadership is to believe so uh I'm not sure that we'll have much new to report over the next couple of weeks but we'll certainly come back to you if uh the situation changes.
Very good thank you.
And then one other note that I would like to make um the the mayor referenced it a couple times was the program that uh occurred earlier this evening uh I uh regarding uh race and equality that was hosted by the Bloomington Noon Rotary Club and uh I want to thank the Rotary Club members for taking an interest in the issue and recognizing that there is conversation that needs to occur within the community and uh stepping forward as one of those uh uh service organizations or civic clubs interested in uh partnering with uh institutions in the community to advance that uh work and I specifically want to thank our panelists we had Andy Kubis from the Bloomington School District Faith Jackson and uh Chief Jeff Potts from the City of Bloomington uh Dr. Joyce Esther the president of Normandale and Blaine Kelly who's a case manager at Oasis Oasis for Youth each of them in their own way uh provided uh very insightful and and powerful testimony uh in terms of how race and equity are affecting uh the areas in which they work so I appreciate everybody who tuned into that program and Rotary's interest in advancing it and uh look forward to having many more conversations in the community like that.
And you did a very nice job yourself moderating well done thank you for doing that. Council anything to bring forward uh council member Martin and council member Baloga is that your hand up from a previous question or you wishing a way in here let's start with council member Martin.
Uh thank you very much mayor I I appreciate it um just a a couple of quick things and apologies if this is a little amorphous uh it is something that's kind of struck me over the last few weeks um it kind of as we're continuing to read the updates on on covid nineteen nationwide is really from what I've seen short of a vaccine this pandemic is kind of the new normal uh and something we're all obviously having to adjust to uh but I'm I'm glad council is continuing to recognize that we still have a city of dang near ninety thousand people uh to support and help move ahead so things like uh re-envisioning our commercial nodes uh the the support we've provided workers small businesses um engaging residents especially in conversations around equity right now so considering that these are some of the things I'm proudest of at the moment I just wanted to give a huge shout out and thank you to our staff uh I've mentioned this before in meetings but when I first started on council uh I I really enjoyed networking with colleagues around the region and I heard almost unanimously how lucky I was to be a new council member uh in Bloomington with the staff and the team that I had uh supporting me supporting all of us and truly no time uh before now has has that been truer uh I think it's pretty impressive uh and just kind of to that last point um for folks who are frustrated with the direction that council takes to pursue as a whole uh on any issue uh I'm concerned that it seems like our staff are more and more serving as a punching bag for folks to vent those frustrations I I and just wanted to say if a resident has concerns please reach out to your council member uh share them that's what we're here for especially as we have these really tough conversations around the budget coming up just around the corner uh however heated that feedback is uh it's it's useful for us council members to hear that uh but this recent increase in thrashing whether in public comment or on social media of the staff who are doing their jobs carrying out the policy direction that council is putting forward I think it's as toxic as it is disappointing uh so I I just wanted to say a I think now more than ever respect matters and civility matters and the overwhelming majority of Bloomington residents know that um we've all met many of them uh so I especially now in times of this tough I I like to remind myself of that uh and just wanted to do so here as well.
Thank you member councilman Martin well said thank you. Council member Carter and then council member Loman.
Um thank you mayor so I have a couple of different things um so I have been fortunate enough to be able to participate in some of the community engagement sessions that coed is leading with some of our BIPOC leaders in Bloomington and um in the last one that I attended you know I I had some really great takeaways and it was really helpful to listen and to learn from the the residents themselves and I'm just wondering um so I have a couple couple things I want to say about that but the first is you know I'm wondering if it would be um of interest to my colleagues on council to have maybe a couple of the staff from the coed team or um maybe one of them and then Chief Potts because he's been attending a lot of them um come and just kind of summarize and share what they've been hearing um because you know I think as much as we can try to get to those meetings they're typically during the work day and you know we all have full-time jobs and so um you know again I I'm fortunate to have been able to make it to a few of them and I'm going to continue to do that but I really do think it'd be helpful for um for the things that are being said and discussed in those meetings that are relevant for the city council to hear for them to be heard um so that's my first point on that um and then the second is that um something that's come up when I've talked to a couple of people it came up in the Latinx um community leaders meeting and it it came up when I was running for council actually too is to have some kind of um like we do welcome meals but maybe like a welcome packet or some kind of resource that residents could receive um when they move to Bloomington um and it could be um I mean for anybody who moves here but have it in multiple languages that just has critical information about how to pay your bills that there's a slot at city hall you can put your water bill in and um what are some of the key you know laws and ordinances in Bloomington that people should be aware of um and so you know for one one example is you know one of the women on the call had said that you know it's been it's challenging because you know some people move here and then they don't uh they it they might just have completely different rules or laws compared to where they may have lived before and then you know law enforcement gets involved if a neighbor calls and it just kind of and there's already some fear and mistrust and it kind of escalates things so I just wanted to share that idea um because there was definitely a call for more resources um if Chief Potts is on I I think he could speak to it a little bit too and I know he had some some really good um ideas for how um even the police department could help support some of that um so those are the two things um specifically related to community engagement um and and then the last thing that I wanted to talk about um and if it's helpful I can pause because it's a different subject.
I'd say fire away keep going.
Okay so the the third thing um so um Kari mentioned that there had been an increase in pool permits and so the discussion around pools in Bloomington backyard pools this has actually been brought up to me by a handful of families in Bloomington um you know I think covid nineteen has um uh you know more families are thinking about how they can entertain themselves this summer and stay cool and it's come to my attention that it seems Bloomington's um requirements for putting a pool in are possibly a little bit um more strict than some of our surrounding communities according to um what I'm hearing um and I did have some correspondence with um Mr. Marka Guard and he said that you know um you know he said he's more than willing to to do some of that research and to see how we compare and that our pool standards have been the way they are as long as he's been at the city they predate him and so um you know I think that if this is again I've heard from at least four families um where they're really frustrated whether it's an above ground or an in-ground and feeling like our our pool standards are just a little bit um restrictive and so I'm going to put that out there to see if there is interest in that too.
So to recap uh uh an update on what we're hearing on uh with the the coed team and their conversations which I think makes very good sense I think to have a a presentation makes uh I think it would be very helpful to hear what they've been hearing and uh provide some feedback um a task for the communication staff to do the the welcome packet I'm surprised we don't have something like that already but I I wonder if we do and it's just not uh widely available and then the final thing on on um the swimming pools that's one I haven't heard uh in seventeen years I haven't heard anybody complain about pool standards being too difficult to to get a pool put in but uh if 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 it's an issue for folks it I guess it would be worth a look also. Mr. Reverie.
Uh Mr. Mayor uh council member Carter and council members just replying to the comment about the welcome uh packets uh we do not have a uh regular like welcome wagon or uh bundle of information that gets provided to new residents and uh uh it's not for a lack of trying it's just it's a sustained effort that actually takes a fair amount of staff resource uh none of which is to say not interested in doing it we actually did uh for a period a couple of years ago uh as one of the initiatives trying to do more outreach uh have that uh specific act and the best way that we can track uh new um new residences in our community is through our homestead application filings in the assessing department when people buy homes and move into the community and it would also take additional work with our apartment managers and owners uh to get uh tenant turnover information so it's a little bit more sensitive there and the willingness of um uh owners of rental communities or rental properties uh to share some of that information with us uh it's certainly doable it it's a little bit of a lift and so um you know I I think there's a lot of value in that in terms of making people feel welcome but to the uh point that council member Carter made it's a it's a resource discussion.
And um if I may just jump in really quick.
Please.
Um so um so I actually maybe the next a next good step would just be having a more robust conversation about it with staff um and with some of the community leaders to figure out um you know I there was recognition that we were in a tough time in regards to budget and resources and recognition that these types of things take resources and so maybe there are some interim steps that we can take um before kind of having you know um a more robust or maybe we could do things a little bit differently in Bloomington and try some some other things so um I don't want to be like completely wed to a specific like a packet but something that um ensures people have the resources and information that they need when they move in and just to help them feel included in our community.
And Mr. Mayor and council member Carter I appreciate that point very much um uh recognizing that there are many more creative people around this organization than me and there are a lot of good ideas uh uh more so than what I come up with uh to um reiterate a point that was made earlier this evening as part of the program to do things the way that we've always done them and expect different results is a little bit silly right so I I think that uh this is a an opportunity to think about how we can still accomplish the same uh thing and maybe in a different way than we've done it before thank you council member.
Council member Loman and then council member Baloga.
Thank you mayor and um you know uh councilman Carter I really liked that idea of that uh in terms of that that welcome uh uh piece um one thing I would say is um we can look at trying to make that a sustainable kind of effort and just uh my two cents worth uh uh maybe it it looks a little different maybe there's a personal mentor that uh you know takes on that family and we you know we've got a long tradition in in our community of uh volunteerism and maybe we maybe we push that and allow folks to you know kind of come with a creative way of uh welcoming folks to the community I know just something to throw out there uh in terms of the thought uh uh a couple of emails that I've received and we did hear in the public comment kind of switching topics here uh about the homelessness in the uh hotels um and just uh making sure that staff looks at that and we were able to get um comment back to those folks I know that's a part of the uh return on that but I had a couple of emails and that and I promised I would at least bring it up um and then um over the weekend I got the opportunity to attend actually both of the uh the rallies over the weekend uh I I know some folks had uh expressed uh to me and called me there was some concern about uh for various reasons about uh both rallies and I just wanted to just uh be a participant observer uh of both to see and they seemed to to go off without a hitch from when I was there um and didn't see uh any concerns that were there some things that were raised though during uh those rallies um uh folks uh not uh understanding what um our police department is doing um in regards to uh what's happened with George Floyd and and in terms of diversity and those types of things so if uh 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 that might just be something that uh that folks aren't aware of what's going on or maybe there's something deeper there in terms of making sure that we're getting communicating on our messages in terms of what we are doing with our police force and department uh given the new realities and then also um uh just some uh concerns also raised about uh uh this understanding there's rising crime in the city of Bloomington and I wanted to have us uh address that as well just to be sure that uh we understand uh you know what type of crime is taking place in Bloomington and what that looks like and are we seeing an uptick uh in that trending uh of that there were a number of other comments that were made uh you know just uh that I had uh heard just by passing in those things and just um um thought they'd be worth some things here worth addressing and I'll certainly uh uh take some time to talk to the the mayor when I get a chance here uh so I can share the full uh list of these things but there's just a couple items I want to just throw out uh for general consumption um um that's all thank you mayor.
And thank you. Council member Baloga.
Uh thank you Mr. Mayor uh recently we had some storms with high winds and once again uh dead trees that uh are in neighborhoods uh falling over onto houses and doing property damage um we talked around uh late last fall uh looking at this item and uh just want to mention it again since uh I had an outreach by a resident uh who's not only had a tree fall on her house but uh provided some pictures of the next tree that's alongside of it that will also fall on your house uh probably with the next rainstorm so um if uh in the next uh uh see uh one weekly staff can uh uh put in a little update on uh where that uh strengthening of uh uh ordinances uh is planned to be heard by uh city council I would appreciate it and pass that on. Thank you.
Will do. Thank you council member. Council anything additional? I will echo uh council member Loman and uh I I do think we need a a presentation or at least more information about the use of hotels and uh the the rentals by Hannah McConney others to uh and others to home. to and others to home. How is the homeless that during during this pandemic? And so just some updating information, whatever information we can gather from Hennepin County and other agencies would be helpful, I think. Council, anything else? If not, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
It's all moved.
Second.
We've got a motion and a second to adjourn, hearing no further discussion. Ms. Christensen.
Thank you. Baloga?
Aye.
Mayor Bussey?
Aye.
Carter?
Aye.
Coulter?
Aye.
Lohman?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero. We are adjourned. Thank you all very much. Good meeting tonight. Have a good rest of the week. Have a good night. Thanks.
Night, folks.